On Hugh.
Good evening, welcome to tonight's Pleasanton City Council meeting. I'm now going to call the regular meeting of the city council to order. In accordance with Governor Newsom's executive orders and COVID-19 pandemic protocols, this meeting is being conducted in a virtual setting using Zoom. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting live on channel 29 and online through TV 30 and the city's website as noted on the agenda. And now I'd like to ask Councilman Petten if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I will do that, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. I'd like to ask the city clerk to please conduct the roll call.
Certainly, Councilmembers Brown.
Here.
Penton.
Here.
Tasta.
Here.
Vice Mayor Narum.
Here.
And the record reflected Mayor Thorn absent.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to this part of the agenda. We have one item, which is to adopt a resolution declaring the results of the November 3rd, 2020 general municipal election. And City Manager Fiala, we have an agenda report and the resolution. And is there anything additional that you'd like to add to that?
Except to congratulate our new mayor and our new council members. The resolution declares the results of the November 3rd, 2020 general municipal election. With your action, we can proceed to swearing in our new council members and mayor.
Great, okay. So now I will ask each of you, if you have any comments, as well as I'll entertain a motion to adopt that. And Councilmember Brown, would you like to start? You're muted.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the results of the election from November 3rd, as certified by the Alameda County Register of Voters.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tasta, would you like to second that?
I would very much like to second that.
Okay, and Councilman, Councilmember Petten, any comments on this motion?
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate Carla Brown, Mayor-elect Brown, on her, on the election results and, and wish her all the best. And I also want to welcome Jack Bosch and Valerie Arkin to the council and, and congratulate them as well.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? No, okay. With the city clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Yes, Councilmembers Brown.
Yes.
Penton.
Yes.
Tasta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narum.
Yes.
The motion unanimously.
Okay, before I move on to some speakers that I understand would like to make some comments, I do want to share that I actually received a phone call today from Mayor Thorn. He's home. He's still four to six weeks out from being fully recovered, but he asked me to, you know, congratulate everyone, thank Councilman Petten for his service and congratulate Carla and Julie and Jack, Carla, Valerie and Jack, and wish them the best. And also, he is very grateful for all the cards that he's received. And it sounded like it was literally hundreds, so it was good to hear from him. So Madam Clerk, if you could call the first speaker, please?
Our first speaker is Congressman Eric Swalwell.
Is he in the room? Oh, there he is.
You're in, I don't see him in the room. I do, actually, the camera's on.
Now I lost him. All right, maybe let's go on to the next one and we can come back. He may be having trouble.
I can see Congressman Swalwell, he looks like he's on mute, though.
Yeah. No, he's not.
Oh, there he is. You moved, welcome.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Sure, I just, thank you for allowing me to zoom in with each and every one of you. I'm in Washington right now, we're hoping to have a COVID deal that provides state and local relief, but I wanted to thank the two Jerries, but especially Councilmember Jerry, who's departing tonight, Jerry Petten, for your years of service to Pleasanton. Jerry, you've been such a terrific guy, a great representative for Pleasanton, but at your core, always a Marine, and you've brought that discipline, love of country to your service in our community. And I've seen it upfront as a fellow council member when I was in Dublin and you were on the Planning Commission, you're concerned about local transportation issues, especially as it relates to bicycle path access, as well as making sure that, you know, we have transportation projects that link us to other communities and reducing congestion, so people can spend more time with their families and less time in traffic. So Jerry, congratulations on just a long career and being someone who is always willing to work with everyone. You're a problem solver, you approach every issue not from any sort of partisan angle, just as, as I said, a good guy who cares about his community. And so I just wanted to honor and thank you tonight for stepping up and answering that call to service. So thank you, Jerry, and congratulations on your service.
Well, thank you Congressman, I really appreciate your words, your kind words.
All right, thank you Congressman, keep up the good work.
Thank you Kathy, and congratulations to Mayor-elect Carla Brown as well.
Next, do we have another speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Supervisor Nate Miley, followed by Senator Steve Glazer.
Great, welcome Nate.
Thank you, wow, I get to get in there before the Senator and follow the Congressman. So it's an honor, once again, to be here at a Pleasanton City Council meeting. It's virtual, but it's nonetheless, it's as good as it gets for now. And, you know, let me just initially say, yeah, we wish Mayor Thorn a speedy recovery. You know, our, our hearts and our prayers are with him, that he, you know, that he recovers very rapidly. And then, as I said at the last meeting, you know, definitely want to congratulate the Mayor-elect Carla Brown and all the other council members who are going to be serving Pleasanton once again in the new term. But tonight, you know, last time I was on, I kind of snuck Jerry Penton in there with Mayor Thorn, but tonight it's all about Jerry Penton. So Jerry, I got a little commendation, I could just kind of read, read that. So, "In honor of your distinguished service from 2003 to 2020, is with great pleasure that I honor you with this certificate of appreciation and commendation and recognition of your service to the residents of the city of Pleasanton and the county of Alameda, the great state of California and the great nation, the United States of America. And as the Congressman pointed out, your service as a Marine is definitely appreciated. Throughout your 17 years of cumulative elected and point of service, you have been a strong champion of bicycle and pedestrian safety. I know when I would come to events, I'd often see you riding your bike. Transportation and open space have also been things that you've put a lot of time and attention into. Additionally, you have supported numerous charity and community events to better the lives of those you serve. You have been a tireless advocate for the most vulnerable and have selfishly uplifted countless individuals. Your sense of hometown pride has helped to lead our community and serve as an inspiration to all of us. Thank you for your compassion, your generosity and your commitment to our shared community. I commend you on your service and wish you great success in your future endeavors. And I definitely know, we haven't seen the last of you, so thank you so very much, Jerry."
Supervisor, thank you so much for your kind words, and both you and the Congressman, I cert, I just really appreciate you taking the time tonight, and I'm sure Senator Glazer as well, but thank you, everybody.
Thank you Supervisor. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Senator Steve Glazer, followed by Margine Rivera.
Vice Mayor Narum, the, the message from the Senator is a video message, I'll have to share it out here.
Okay.
Jerry Petten, I want to say congratulations on eight wonderful years of service to the city of Pleasanton and really to the whole region. I've really enjoyed working with you. I know your public service didn't start with the council and it won't end with your service on the council, but they've been great years, you've really made a wonderful contribution to your town and I'm, I'm very, very appreciative and congratulations.
Wow, thank you Senator.
Yep, that was great. Okay, next speaker, please?
How many, how many speakers do we have here? I really appreciate everybody, but I did not expect this.
I was told that the script tells me there's eight.
Oh boy.
Our next speaker is Margine Rivera, followed by Todd Nelson.
Hello.
Hello Margine, welcome.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I, I just wanted to tell you, it's my great honor to talk to you a little bit about Jerry and what a wonderful person he is and what a servant he is for the city of Pleasanton. I first spoke to Jerry in 2004 about the idea of turning the old firehouse in downtown Pleasanton into a performing arts center. And it was an idea that several of us had been working on for a couple of years and not getting buy-in from the city of Pleasanton. And, and I knew Jerry was passionate, I don't even know that Jerry will remember this conversation. He was passionate about Pleasanton. And in doing so, I approached him and talked to him about our vision for what could happen in the downtown area. And we knew we were fighting against the odds, but I knew also that if we were to get somebody behind this, it would be Jerry Penton. And he knew the odds were not real good in our favor, and he got behind this. He encouraged us to keep on with our vision, and we did. We formed, formed a 501(c)(3), four of us, in order to put in our own money and invest in the community. And Jerry was behind this all the way, Jerry was lobbying with the city, the council members, until eventually the council members got involved. And Jerry was always behind this on that, and eventually the city of Pleasanton really saw what could happen, and they came on board fully. But I know that would not have happened if it hasn't, hadn't been for Jerry and his support. And we are just very grateful because of the fact that the city of Pleasanton has had that art center for 10 years, and every time I go down there, I think of Jerry and that first-time conversation. But beyond that, I would just like to say that he's just terribly enthusiastic, sincere, passionate, and if you want to get somebody involved who will get the job done, that's absolutely Jerry. There's, there's so much I could say about him, and I only have three minutes, so I apologize, but the city of Pleasanton needs a lot of Jerry Pentons in their back pocket, because all walks of life need to know what it takes to actually serve their community and serve the city and serve the people of Pleasanton. So again, I'm very honored to have known Jerry, to see his work, to know his legacy and to know how much he cares, so thank you again, Jerry.
Thank you Margine, you're a true friend and I really do appreciate your kind words.
Thank you Margine, next speaker?
Our next speaker is Todd Nelson, followed by Doug Miller.
Hi, I've lived in Pleasanton for over 25 years and I've seen a lot of positive change. So on behalf of all the pedestrians and cyclists, I wanted to say a few words to thank Jerry Petten. He's been a consistent advocate for trails from his days on the Parks and Recs Committee and his work on the original bike and pedestrian master plan. And this year with the pandemic, there was a big increase in the number of people riding their bikes. And thanks to Jerry's foresight and steady support, those new riders have plenty of safe places to ride. Of course, credit goes to the mayor and the other council members over the years and to the Transportation Department, but Jerry was always vocal in his support. And now we have the Iron Horse Trail, the Marlin Murphy Kane Trail, Vineyard Trail, the Newcastle Ritz Trail, and miles and miles of green Penton paint all over town. So I don't know if Jerry gets credit for all those, and I don't mean to slight the other members who worked on it with him, and Jerry would be the first to deflect the credit, but we all owe him thanks for his contributions, so thank you Jerry.
Thanks Todd, thank you very much, see you on the road.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Doug Miller, followed by Samantha Kago.
Doug, you're muted. This is Doug Miller, do you hear me now?
Yes, welcome Doug.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, thank you for letting me speak tonight, and congratulations to the new mayor and our two new city council members, I certainly wish you well. I asked to speak tonight from the perspective of a veteran about a veteran, and of course, that's Jerry Petten. In general, politicians I find give lip service to veterans more than action, and Jerry Petten is the exception to the rule. For the 20 years that I've known him, I can give you three exceptional examples of the work that Jerry Petten has done here in town. Most recently for me, when I was involved with the Veterans Memorial Project at Sanol, at the Pioneer Cemetery, we formed up about 2014 to build a memorial, and Jerry, and Jerry Thorn as well, were instrumental in helping us, guiding us through the intricacies of working with the city, the bureaucracies as, as they are, and we got great guidance and support. And, and I think Nelson would say that we, we succeeded in exceptional manner from design to dedication in, in less than two years. So I attribute a lot of that success to what Jerry Petten did for us. Second thing is less well-known about Jerry is his role when he was a commissioner. The city decided to rehabilitate the Veterans Memorial Building downtown on Main Street. That building was built in 1933 at about $38,000 and, and with Jerry Petten's direction and, and leadership, the city spent $5 million preserving that building, that was rededicated in 2007. It's a beautiful building, the, with the work that the renovation folks did uncovered artwork that had been hidden by smoke and soot and neglected maintenance. It's a beautiful building today and it's a, it's a real tribute to Jerry Petten's work. And finally, I would say with regard to Pleasanton Military Families and the 20 years, almost 20 years of continued warfare, Jerry Petten has always been there, every homecoming, every packout. Just three weeks ago, Jerry was at our packout where we sent several hundred packages to deployed local service members, deployed overseas. So I want to thank Jerry for all that work. I note that with tonight, where we had typically two veterans on the, on the city council from 2012 until tonight, and even three actually, when Arnie Olson was a member for four years, we had three of the five members of city council, all veterans. And I, I note tonight that Nate Miley is there too, so thank you for your service, all of you. Had Jerry continued, I really believe that we would have stepped up to address housing for veterans in this area, it's a real need, there's hundreds of veterans that need assistance and housing in this area, and I would hopefully challenge the next city council to take up that need. So Jerry, congratulations and thank you for your dedicated work for so many years. I appreciate it, and I know the veteran community of Pleasanton appreciates your work, thank you.
Thank you Doug, and it's not often you hear an Army guy praise a Marine, so it's pretty special.
Our next speaker is Samantha Kago, followed by Herb Ritter.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me, yes?
Yes, you're good.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Sam Kago, I'm the Regional Public Affairs Manager for the East Bay Division of the League of California Cities. I'm so grateful to have the opportunity to be here today to express my appreciation and gratitude for Councilmember Jerry Petten. Many of Councilmember Petten's fellow East Bay Division Board members wanted to be here tonight as well. Tuesday is a very popular night for council meetings, so many of them are at their own council meetings unfortunately, but know that they share similar sentiment, and I'm speaking in part on their behalf too. Councilmember Petten, the League of California Cities is, and I personally am grateful for your service to our organization during your time in office. The East Bay Division encompasses 33 very diverse cities. I have admired watching you as a leader in the division, you've served on our board since 2017 because of your ability to not only bring together diverse voices, but to listen to and encourage their participation. You saw so much value in that, and it made us stronger as an organization. I'm so grateful for the energy and enthusiasm you brought to the division, whether it was at our regular division meetings, at our Legislative Action Days in Sacramento, at board meetings, at the Transportation, Communication and Public Works Policy Committee where you served since 2016, or at the division's annual baseball game. I don't know if you guys know this, but Councilmember Petten makes a mean chili and would bring and share that with us at our tailgate party. So your energy and enthusiasm is contagious, and I think encouraged others to participate, so I thank you for that. I've also appreciated getting to know you personally. I loved getting to know your wife and hearing about your daughter. I admire your love of the outdoors and that you share that with your daughter. You're such a cool dad, you guys have such great experiences together, I think that's really awesome. While I'm really gonna work, miss working with you, I feel like I've also gained a friend and I look forward to hearing about your new adventures. So thank you again, Councilmember Petten, for your dedication to the League of Cities and your inspiring dedication to public service, I feel fortunate to have worked with you. I also want to note that I'm really glad to hear the news about Mayor Thorn and his health and that he's back home, and of course, I want to congratulate incoming mayor and council members on your elections, I look forward to our work ahead in advocating for California cities. And again, thank you Mayor, Councilmember Petten, I feel so grateful to be, have been able to work with you, and have a good evening, thank you for having me here.
Well, thank you Sam, thank you very much, we'll talk soon.
Sounds good, thank you.
Our final speaker is Herb Ritter.
Hi, are you there?
Welcome Herb.
Hey, how you doing? I'm just making sure everything's, I gotta change my virtual background. There we go. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays. Thank you Vice Chair, I'm so glad to hear about Mayor Thorn. And first, I wanted to congratulate the new members of council, Carla, Jack and Valerie. I'm comfort, confident that all of you love the community as much as we all do and sincerely hope you work together to keep Pleasanton a great place to live, work and play. Thank you for your service to our community. Also, I'd like to extend a huge thank you to outgoing member Jerry Petten. I've had the privilege of knowing, working and serving with Jerry on various Pleasanton civic committees and community service projects for over 28 years. Jerry's a true steadfast leader who diligently researches every topic and gathers community input before making decisions as to what he feels is best for Pleasanton. You always search for the why before making recommendations, Jerry. When you started your civic service about 24 years ago, you, you always told me you were going to a golf meeting. I thought you were just practicing. I didn't realize until later that your efforts on the committee created the beautiful course at Calippe. That's an amazing accomplishment. Also, there's a rumor out there that a Petten was the first golfer to hit a drive on that course. And also here, a rumor that a Petten was the first golfer to lose a ball there on that course. I think it was before the flags were up, but Jerry, you, you are a selfless leader and visionary who always encourages family, friends and residents to be involved in civic or community service organizations. He even encouraged me to get on the Trails Committee over 16 years ago. And heck, you also encouraged me to technically run against you for city council in 2016. We know what happened there.
Yeah.
On a personal note, Jerry encouraged my son to scuba dive, and Jimmy enjoyed it so much, he ended up getting his rescue diver certification, probably to look out for Dad. He also spoke at my son's Eagle Scout Court of Honor and just made some, made some real lasting remarks for my own, my own kid, so thank you for that. Jerry is the utmost integrity in his profession, civic and personal life. He's an awesome dad and husband of 36 years, and his rotaries, I see your rotary pin on there Jerry, nice job. Service above self motto is reflected in everything he does. Frankly, Jerry is more a civil servant than he is a politician. He just does everything. And in summary, you have inspired and positively influenced so many people in this town, and I certainly hope we can continue to use you as a resource for future and past, for, for future and past leaders. Thank you for your amazing service, but most of all, for your 30 years plus of friendship to me. And as Southwest Tagline goes, ding, you are now free to move about. I've heard you say that before, but don't go far buddy, your wife, family and friends still need you. So thanks for your service buddy.
Thanks Herb, thanks so much.
Nicole, that's the last speaker, is that correct?
Correct, that was our last speaker.
Great, thank you. So I'll ask colleagues if they'd like to make any remarks. Councilmember Tasta, would you like to start? Sorry, I didn't see.
I'd like to thank Jerry for his service to the community. I've only served with you for a couple of years, but I know you to be a consistent representative for the bike ped community, and they've always been benefited from your advocacy. And I've enjoyed serving with you on the Livermore Amador Valley Water Management Agency. That was one committee that we worked on together. So I wish you all the best in your next ventures. I know you'll still be very involved in our community, and thank you for your service.
Thanks, Jerry. Thanks so much.
Carla.
Yeah, make sure my volume is on. Hey, Jerry, it's been a long road to hoe together. We met when your daughter was a young soccer player and I was a coach, and I didn't take it personally that she quit soccer because of me, maybe, and went off to golf where she succeeded at a meteoric level and obviously went to Cal playing golf. So it was a pleasure to get to know your wife, Josie, as well. We ran three campaigns side by side, and hats off to you for this last campaign. You definitely made me work harder than I've ever worked before because you raised the bar, and I appreciate that. So we had the opportunity to run in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and sixteen, and now two thousand and twenty. I sat next to you for four of our eight years on the council. And as so many good people before me said, your advocacy for bicycles and get out of a car, go for a walk or go for a bike, I will never forget. So when I ever get on a bicycle, you can bet I'm gonna think of you. It's nothing fancy. It's not titanium wheels. It's not a five thousand dollar bike like yours, but I do wheel around every once in a while. And I would like to thank you for inspiring us to all get out of the car and go for a bike ride. Thanks.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Carla. I do appreciate it, and it's been wonderful working with you, too, as well.
So Jerry, I do have a few comments.
Yeah, this is the one I'm worried about.
You should be. No, seriously, I, you know, Jerry, it's just, I was thinking about this and just it's hard to believe that it's been just about twenty years since we first met way back when, and I can't remember exactly what it was, but, you know, we served on Park and Rec Commission together and then the Planning Commission. And finally, the last eight years or so on the city council, actually, for me, seven and a half. And, you know, I was reflecting on after twenty years, you really get to know a lot about a person during the in twenty years. And so I thought I would take a minute and acknowledge some of the legacy that you're gonna leave behind for the community. Although a few people, I think, kind of stole some of my thunder, but I'm gonna do it anyway. So I believe that one of the first projects that you really got involved with was to help get that Calippi Golf Course built. And I know that was personal for you, not only because you play golf, but also because of your daughter Joy and her golf. And, you know, I really could understand and appreciate that because it was much like the swimming pool, I think, for Mayor Thorne and myself and the Seahawks. And, you know, I I'm not sure if we reflect back at the time. Any of us could have imagined how, you know, successful Calippi would be and that we would end up with an award-winning golf course, public golf course, that that this community could be proud of. I also think that that, you know, has been touched upon. We all know that you are a Marine and proud of it, and we thank you for that service. And it was clear, your your deep commitment to the Veterans Memorial Building, the renovation of that, the use of that, that's been touched upon by, I think, so adequately by Doug Miller, the creation of the Veterans Memorial at Pioneer Cemetery and the work with the Pleasanton Military Families. And you were always the one there till the end, and the last box was on the trailer. As Margine said, you know, I think back to the building of the Firehouse Arts Center and the theater, and what a wonderful amenity for this community. And how many of us have enjoyed comedy, music, plays there? I know my husband and I certainly have, and I think probably most of us have here. And, you know, you were you were key in helping get that done and and funneling the efforts of, I like to say, getting the rubber to the road on that one. But, you know, there's no doubt that, while all of these projects were near and dear to you, and they all contributed to the community in their own unique way. I have to reflect on the Penton Paint, as as has been referred to here, otherwise known as those green bike lanes. And I, you're gonna get to comment, but I suspect those are probably the thing that you will want to be known for or remembered for as as starting the Penton Paint. And, you know, I think it really reflects as an avid bike rider. You were passionate about expanding both the safety and the opportunities for bicyclists in and around Pleasanton. And you also, I think, kind of led the charge to get us recognized as a bicycle-friendly city. And I I think it's pretty telling. What do we have, two, three bike stores here in town that this town can support those as viable businesses? That says a lot about the importance of it and and the emphasis that I think has now been placed on that. And a lot of that, I think, is from your early efforts and in just saying, you know, we need to take care of this. So as I think about this, this is, you know, somewhat like Mayor Thorne. It's it's a partialist of your legacy. I'm gonna stop because I think Carla probably would like to get on with the meeting, understandably. But I I think, you know, this just demonstrates that, you know, you as as our colleague, our friend, you know, you had the tenacity, the commitment to see all of these things to completion. And quite frankly, Pleasanton is a much better place to live and and to play here because of your commitment, civic commitment to our community. And so I just want to really say thank you for your service and your twenty years of commitment to the community and the best of luck to you and whatever you decide to pursue next. And with that, I will be quiet, and I suspect you might have a couple of comments.
Yeah, thank you, Kathy, Vice Mayor Narum. We truly do go a long ways back. I am, you can't but be humbled by the people who have spoke tonight on my behalf. And it's in the words I want to say tonight that nobody does this alone. It's a team. It's a council. It's a city staff. And so I would certainly never take credit for all the wonderful things that have occurred in the last twenty, twenty-five years that have served the city. But it's wonderful to hear from our congressman and our senator and and our supervisor. And then people like Sam and Herb and Doug and Todd and and Margine. You know, and and it makes me think, because I don't take any of this for granted. I don't. I don't take any of you for granted. But what I did, as Herb mentioned, was service above self, is service above self. And it just came naturally. It just, it's what we should all be doing. So I appreciate everyone's comments. I do have some some words here. Hopefully, nobody has anything to fear. I'm gonna get kicked to the curb in about five minutes, so I'll get this over with. But I I'm gonna say what I want to say, but there's someone I have forgotten in this. I want to say it right now. She's so important in the city and to the city council. And as Lisa Tarno, she's amazing. She's the person behind the scenes for us on council. And I just wrote a note and said, how can I forget Lisa? She has been, she's our admin for council in the city manager's office, and she's an incredible person, wonderful. And I will always remember our relationship and the support she gave me. I'd like to thank everyone who's been here with me and for me over these past eight years, the council member. And believe it or not, folks, the other seventeen years, it goes back to nineteen ninety-six, when I was selected to eventually serve on the Calippi Golf Course Committee. And as we do things in a pleasant and way, that committee was supposed to be a win-win done in twelve to eighteen months. And nearly ten years later, we opened this beautiful nationally-recognized golf course. But like I said a moment ago, no one succeeds alone. And my path has been smoothed by so many of you in Pleasanton. And for that, I'll always be grateful. I'd like to thank our city manager, Nelson Fiallo. He's the best of the best. He's become a true friend, but he's also a great leader in the city. He's got a great executive team. They're the people who run this city and do an incredible job. They're behind the scenes, but they're there and and they're they're just great with their support. And they also are passionate about Pleasanton. And then the four hundred-plus employees of Pleasanton. You're awesome. You truly make this city what it is. And I would not have represented our city and residents without your unwavering support. You know, what are these things? Jesus. I'd also like to thank our mayor, Jerry Thorne. One, I'm hoping for his health and his future. He's a great guy, but his support for me over the years has been incredible. Not just these last eight eight years on our council, but all the way back to our park and rec days, which are at least twenty years ago. You've been a great mayor and an even better friend, and I wish you well in your future endeavors with your wife, Kaylee, and 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 look forward to many, many more times together. To my fellow council members that I have served with, Kathy Narum, Arnie Olson, Cheryl Cook-Callio, Carla Brown and Julie Testa. We did a great job leading this city. We really did. I'm patting myself on the back and patting all of us on the back. We brought the city out of a great recession and historic drought amongst many other issues. It was a team effort with a diverse mindset, and I wouldn't trade the experience for anything. Like to give a special shout out to Vice Mayor Kathy Narum. You have been my mentor, my friend, sometimes a hard-nosed detractor who pushes my buttons so many times. And it was exactly what I needed to keep myself in check and move forward as a fully vested representative of Pleasanton. And I'd like to also do a big shout out, hey, to all my special friends who've been my sounding board, listening to my ups and downs through this chapter of my life. You know who you are. You know what you mean to me, and I want to thank all of you so much. And to one of my best friends, Brian Gillette, my former campaign manager, and now stuck with me as my cycling partner, a big thank you, and you know that. And to another best friend who spoke and civil civic servant, Mr. Herb Ritter, Aka Santa Claus on Candy Cane Lane. He has been with me all these years, and yes, he darn near beat me in two thousand and sixteen for council, but I'd also like to see him in a council seat someday. I'd also like to thank our residents and our businesses in Pleasanton. You are Pleasanton. You challenge me to be better every day, and I hope I met your expectations. And as I leave office today, I want to make sure that I'm very clear on something. I fully support Carla Brown as our next mayor and those elected to the city council, Kathy, Jack, Valerie and Julie. It's their council and their mission to continue guiding our city forward. And I'm fully confident in their in their in them and their irrevocable passion in serving Pleasanton. I know they'll do the job that needs to be done. And so please give them a fair shake as they navigate some difficult times now and in the future. This role as your city leaders, as your city council, it truly is service above self, and they should all be supported for what they're what they do and what they will do. Last, but absolutely not least, I have my own team. I have my family. God, I didn't think I'd do this. My wife, Josine. Be right back. And my very, very special daughter, Joy. My service has been their service. They took every step with me and deserve far more credit than I do, and I will be eternally grateful to them. Over this time, I've worn a lot of hats, and I've been called a lot of names, but, I mean, I've worn a lot of titles, had a lot of titles, but the one that's most important is is the title Dad. My daughter is so important to me. She's a great kid. And 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 with her and my wife, we will move forward after today, but they have been here the whole time. And and thank you, thank you, thank you. As for me and my next steps, contrary to popular beliefs, the reports of my demise have been greatly exaggerated. I'm still around, and I will be. I'll return certainly to my main skill set of producing films and videos, primarily in the environmental category, which I have been doing for the last forty years. And of course, I'll be spending a lot of time on my bikes. And 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 who knows, maybe in a couple of years, I'll finally fulfill a passion of mine, and that's ride one of my bikes across the country, something that I want to do, and I believe I will do. So stay tuned. I'd like to end this long remarks with a few words from one of my favorite city employees, the late, great Mike Fulford. It speaks to my love of the outdoors. Over in our Brunel Community Park, you can find Mike's Rock. I visit this rock all the time on bike rides that I do. It's a very special place in our city, and the rock has a very special inscription. And it's something that would define me. And it's, it just says, people, despite their artistic pretensions, their sophistication and their many accomplishments, owe their existence to a six-inch layer of topsoil and the fact that it rains. And so thanks to all. Be safe, be kind, and we'll see you around town. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Well said.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to the next part of the meeting, which is the Oath of Office. And City Clerk Karen Diaz will now administer the oath of office to Mayor-elect Carla Brown.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mayor-elect Brown, could I have you raise your right hand? Say aye your name in the repeat after me.
Aye, Carla Brown.
You solemnly affirm, do solemnly affirm, that I will support and defend,
that I will support and defend,
the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution for the State of California,
against all enemies, foreign and domestic,
against all enemies, foreign and domestic,
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
to the Constitution of the United States,
to the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
that I take this obligation freely,
that I take this obligation freely,
without any mental reservation,
without any mental reservation,
or purpose of evasion,
or purpose of evasion,
and that I will well and faithfully,
and that I will well and faithfully,
discharge the duties,
discharge the duties,
upon which I'm about to enter,
upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you. Now, if you could just sign the oath before you.
Got it.
And and deliver it to you tomorrow?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of comments if I could. Everybody log back on, it's all good. I wanted to thank the the individuals that I campaigned against, who also ran for mayor, Monith Avolosarian, Dorothy Ganta, Tom Terpal, and of course, our own Jerry Penton. I know the voters had a choice when they went to vote of a choice of five candidates, which is the largest pool I ever recall. And I know that many Pleasanton voters selected another candidate, and I hope over the next two years to earn their trust and their vote. Let me take a minute to introduce myself. As your new mayor, I live by the policy that my cup is always half-full. Very positive, and I, one person who will always stand up for their friends. So don't ever diss my friends, because I'm gonna come back on you. Which is exactly actually how I got involved in politics, standing up for what I felt was the right thing to do. When I was a young girl, I was raised on a family vineyard, a wine vineyard, and we're no strangers when you're working on a vineyard to roll up your sleeves and get to work. You may know that I started my civic engagement against a litigation against PG&E. They wanted to put a high-power tension line literally down my street. And myself, a handful of neighbors, along with the city of Pleasanton fought. And myself, a handful of neighbors, along with the city of Pleasanton fought and won against PG&E. So later, a rich-top housing project was proposed in the general area of my home. I gathered signatures along with other involved residents. We put both permanent ridge line protection as well as this contentious housing project on the ballot, and the voters agreed with us. So although I didn't follow the steps, most council members that I served with, so I actually had never served on a committee or commission before I was elected to council, but I have the most respect of those that do and that contribute, not only in their final decisions, but also in their contribution and recommendations to the city council. It is through these committees and commissions that this council becomes a better council, more educated, more involved, and more highly influenced by some very, very bright people. So as your city manager, as your city manager, as your mayor for the city of Pleasanton, I intend to roll up my sleeves, work hard, and earn your respect and your vote. And I very much appreciate Jerry Penton's support in my job of doing that. So thank you, everyone, and I look forward to getting to work. And with that, Kathy?
Yeah, congratulations, Mayor Brown. We can now say that. And I know you'll work hard, and I now turn the meeting over to you, and I can go back and be more of an observer.
There you go. Okay, thank you very much. Well, we have two very exciting meetings this evening because we have two other individuals that are taking the oath of office and becoming our city council members. And our first up is the council member-elect Valerie Arkin. She is being sworn in by our Congressman Eric Swalwell. And I will step back and let Mr. Swalwell, Congressman Swalwell, administer the oath of office.
Hi, Congressman Swalwell.
You're on mute there.
Thank you and congratulations again, Mayor Brown, and also to the council members-elect. It's an honor to swear in Councilmember-elect Arkin. Councilmember-elect, if you could raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Valerie Arkin.
Do solemnly affirm,
do solemnly affirm,
that I will support and defend,
that I will support and defend,
the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
against all enemies, foreign and domestic,
against all enemies, foreign and domestic,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
to the Constitution of the United States,
to the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
that I take this obligation freely,
that I take this obligation freely,
without any mental reservation,
without any mental reservation,
or purpose of evasion,
or purpose of evasion,
and that I will well and faithfully,
and that I will well and faithfully,
discharge the duties,
discharge the duties,
upon which I am about to enter,
upon which I am about to enter.
Well, congratulations, and following the lead of your very talented city clerk, Karen, I will advise you to sign the paperwork and return it to the city. And thank you for your continued service from the school board to the city council.
Thank you, Congressman. I appreciate you being here tonight.
Of course. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Valerie, and thank you, Congressman, for doing that. That's excellent, and thanks for staying up so late during our meeting. Next up, we have our council member-elect Jack Balch. And Jack Balch will be sworn in by our city clerk, Karen Diaz. So Jack, there we are, and if all of us can darken our video and we can watch this incredible event. Councilmember-elect Balch, if you'll raise your right hand, say aye your name and then repeat after me.
Aye, Jack Balch.
Do solemnly affirm,
do solemnly affirm,
that I will support and defend,
that I will support and defend,
the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
against all enemies, foreign and domestic,
against all enemies, foreign and domestic,
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
to the Constitution of the United States,
to the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
that I take this obligation freely,
that I take this obligation freely,
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion,
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion,
and that I will well and faithfully,
and that I will well and faithfully,
discharge the duties,
discharge the duties,
upon which I am about to enter,
upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Thank you. If you'll sign your oath and deliver it to our office tomorrow, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent job. Perfect. So if everybody wants to come back on screen, this is a chance where I want to personally welcome both Jack Balch and Valerie Arkin to the council. You both bring a long history of contributions to our community. You're going to make our council enriched with new ideas and new thoughts and new background and history. And I know through collaboration and good leadership, we're going to have a dynamite outstanding city council. So welcome, and this is a chance where you both get to say something. Valerie, you were sworn in first. If you would like to go next?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I appreciate all that. And before I get started, I wanted to just thank Congressman Swalwell once again for being here tonight to swear me in. It's kind of a funny story. I've always tried to get him to swear me in on the school board, and the three times I was sworn in, he was always in Washington, which he is tonight as well, but since we're virtual, he could do it this time. So I really appreciate him doing that. So thank you, Congressman. So good evening again, everyone. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the community for electing me to the city council. The support really was overwhelming, and I appreciate that from the bottom of my heart. I am honored and excited for this new role, and I look forward to representing the Pleasanton community in a little bit different way than I've been used to. Whether you voted for me or not, I intend on being as transparent as possible and will be responsive and accessible. You deserve a council member who adheres to that ideal and represents you. I am looking forward to making thoughtful, well-informed decisions that continue to make Pleasanton a wonderful place to live, work, and play. To all who have supported my campaign in one way or another, thank you so much. Whether it was a donation, a yard sign, endorsement, fundraising, advice and guidance, or whatever. I couldn't have done this without you, and I appreciate all that you have done. I'd also like to thank my fellow candidates who ran for council. It takes a lot of courage and work to run a campaign, so thank you for getting involved, and I hope you continue to stay involved. I'd like to extend my congratulations to Mayor Carla Brown and Councilmember Jack Balch. I look forward to working with you as well as working with council members Testa and Narum. I think this will be a great team. I also look forward to working with city staff as we all navigate city business. You have all been so welcoming to me. And finally, but very importantly, I'd like to thank my family for the unconditional support as I continue my service in Pleasanton. Every family member of mine had some part in my campaign, and they were all very eager to help. It means so much to me, and I love you all. Thank you again for the honor and privilege of being able to continue serving the Pleasanton community. Thank you.
Excellent. Julie, Kathy, would you have any, would you like to offer any comments for Councilmember Arkin?
Well, I just want to say welcome, and you know, I hate to say it, but I think it's just amazing, you know, that we have four women, sorry, Jack, on the council, and I just, I look forward to getting things done with you. And you know, we have a lot to do, as you probably have the sense, and so I think it'll be good to, you know, finally get to the point to roll up our sleeves and get going. Hopefully, at some point, we'll be back in the chamber because it's just, I much prefer that, but it is what it is. So welcome.
Thank you, Kathy.
And I also very much welcome Valerie. I've known Valerie for literally decades and always appreciated the type of representative that she's been in our community. She has always been the most hardworking and approachable, supporting transparency, and qualities that I've really appreciated, and I think will be wonderful working with you on the council. I look forward to it. Congratulations, Valerie. Good to have you.
Absolutely right. I saw her husband with her oftentimes. I saw her kids with her. It's really a family, a family project. And that's wonderful to see that you have that great support. All right, newly sworn in Councilmember Jack Balch. Would you like to say some words to those of you, those of your team that helped get you into office, and welcome?
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and congratulations to you as well. So I had a statement prepared well in advance of tonight's meeting, but life has a lot of twists and turns when you don't expect them. And if nothing else, 2020 is a year of constant change and adaptation. Pardon me if you've heard or read some of this before, but I do wish to repeat myself slightly. I announced my candidacy for Pleasanton City Council on May 12th, my grandmother's 102nd birthday. A person like many in my life who served as an inspiration of values important to me. And I was honored to share a bit of the day with her. My grandmother was born at the very tail end of World War I, was just a child during the roaring twenties, a teenager during the Great Depression, a young woman who met her future husband during World War II, and started a family but found herself divorced with three children not too long after. After dusting herself off, she saw her oldest child go off to Vietnam. This beautiful woman showered her grandchildren with love and kindness the world had never seen. She coupon clipped her entire life. Being fully Irish, she enjoyed corned beef, a bit of wine, and adult eggnog. She loved playing bridge, a bit of poker, and a bingo game or two, and she loved people. Yesterday, my grandmother reached her eternal destination after 102 years and 216 days of living a wonderful life. My grandmother's life story is a testament to perseverance. And along the way, she remembered to enjoy the journey with kindness and respect, grace and poise, a bit of humor, and it calls upon us to do the same. I grieve in her absence, but I cherish the lessons learned that I carry forward with me. So to all of Pleasanton, I encourage perseverance. Our community is facing challenges like no other in its history with this pandemic. Many of our local businesses and restaurants were looking forward to a strong holiday season, even with the state-mandated modifications. I know firsthand of many local businesses that ordered inventory and supplies, built outdoor structures, hired seasonal staff, all for the anticipated and much-needed holiday sales. As we all know, businesses are severely challenged again, but businesses are not the only ones at risk, and so many of our residents are facing their own challenges. From the ability to pay for rent, keep food on the table, give a holiday gift to a child to feel special, or gathering with loved ones for the holiday or remembrance. We are all feeling the pain of this pandemic. So with so many businesses facing unprecedented hardship, and so many residents as well, I promise to work as hard as I can to help our community survive these most devastating circumstances. If you are able, please patronize one of our local businesses for your holiday shopping and the takeout meals. If you are able, please consider donating a warm coat, a can of food, a gift card, or monetary contribution to any one of the numerous charities serving our community. And if you are able, please consider reaching out to someone you haven't talked to in a while. Rekindle hope. Don't forget our seniors. As opportunities can be fickle. My grandmother taught us about grit and determination and how to show up for life. She showed me about supporting one another with caring and kindness. So I'm here tonight to challenge each and every one of us to stretch ourselves, to think of new and innovative ways to support one another and our community in these perilous times. We cannot do it alone. We need everyone's ideas and support, suggestions, and I promise to be here for it all. I ask in closing for you to show empathy. Please advance kindness. Please cultivate gratitude. Thank you to my family, my wife and son. Thank you to my supporters, and thank you to Pleasanton. I'm humbled to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. And our prayers go out to you and your family and thoughts of your grandmother. She sounds like an amazing woman. And I did hear you talk about her on the campaign trails, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Narum, I know you're doing the closing statements, but I'd very much like to do a moment of remembrance for Councilmember Balch's grandmother. All right. Vice Mayor Narum, would you like to speak on behalf to our newly sworn-in Councilmember Balch?
Sure. Yeah, so it's difficult because, you know, under the circumstances, I would have had some very different words probably to share, going all the way back to the Planning Commission and meeting Jack there when he was trying to get a application resolved and didn't quite know what to do, and suggested, you know, really be good if he got involved so that he could be part of contributing to good government. And after he told me I was crazy and talked a little more, you know, the rest is history. And I'm just, I'm thrilled that he's here as the next generation. I had hoped that his grandmother would be able to see this day. It's a momentous. But I'm no doubt, Jack, that she's looking down and still very proud of you, as are the rest of your family. So I just, I'm thrilled to be serving with you as peers. So welcome.
All right. Thank you. Good comments. Councilmember Testa?
I just want to welcome you, Jack. I'm looking forward to working with you, getting to know you. We haven't had the opportunity to get to know each other on any level so far. So it's an open book and looking forward to the story. Welcome.
Excellent. And Councilmember Arkin?
Yes, my thoughts are with you, Jack, on the loss of your grandmother. I hope in time, the memories will allow you to smile and laugh instead of the tears. Trust me on that one. And I am looking forward to working with you on the council. We met, I think, for the first time on the campaign trail, and it was always a pleasure talking to you down at Farmer's Market and all that. And I just, congratulations on your win, and again, look forward to working with you, and I think it'll be a great team.
You too.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. We are seated, and it is time to do a roll call with our new council. So City Clerk, would you like to do a roll call?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Brown. Councilmembers Arkin?
Here.
Balch?
Present.
Narum?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Mayor Brown?
Here. All right. And do we have any agenda amendments by staff?
And Mayor, we have one modification to the agenda. Staff-initiated. It is item, the Down Payment Assistance Program, Preference Assistance Program. That item is going to continue to your next regular meeting, which is January 19th.
Thank you. Any agenda amendments by council? All right, seeing none. Do we have anybody that would like to make a motion or ask a question? And we haven't opened the public hearing, but anybody have any questions on the consent calendar?
Yes, I do, Mayor Brown. I would like to just ask a clarifying question on item number 10. Shall I go ahead and ask?
Ask away.
Okay, okay. On item number 10, we are in the third year of this three-year agreement. $250,000 was allotted for each year. Two years have already passed. And on the consent agenda is asking to up that amount because we've already used more money than expected. And I know with the staff report, it said primarily due to projects being done during COVID times and city workers not being able to work. I would just like to ask a clarifying question on that. Were those extra, which is about an extra $175,000, if you're looking at it budgeted, was expended since March, I guess? Or was some of that expended in the two years prior?
So, Councilmember Arkin, the shortfall is anticipated for this year. And it's a result of accelerated spending resulting from the COVID pandemic, where we had to augment our effort, our maintenance effort with contractual support in a manner that is higher than in previous years. And that coupled with the pace and aging of our infrastructure. While our employees could not come to work during that time between March and July, we just relied on contractual support more so than in-house support. So this should norm out as we climb out of the pandemic in the future. So I see this very much as a blip in our spending for contractual activities in this area.
Okay, thank you. That's all I, I just wanted that to be clarified. Thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions, Madam Clerk, do we have anybody that would like to speak from the public on any of the items on consent calendar?
No.
Okay, since we're in a virtual setting, I'll ask my colleagues if anybody would like to make a motion. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I will. I'll move the consent calendar with the exception of item number two.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Vice Mayor Kathy Narum and seconded by Councilmember Julie Testa. Any discussion on the items? Seeing none, I'm going to ask you individually, since we're in a COVID, since we're in a virtual setting individually for your vote. I guess the clerk could also, but I'll do it. Councilmember Arkin.
Hi.
Councilmember Balch.
I accept, I'm going to recuse from item number three because that's Planning Commission coming forward, just in case I had heard anything on that item already.
Good point. Councilmember Narum?
Yes.
Councilmember Testa?
Aye.
And I agree as well. So we have a unanimous with Councilmember Balch recusing for the item Agenda Three, and item Agenda Two has been pulled by staff. Next on is meeting open to the public. This is a time for anyone from the public that would like to address the city council on any subject regarding city business that is not on our agenda for this evening. Normally, no action may be taken on matters that are not listed on the agenda. And each speaker is limited to three minutes. Madam Clerk, has there been any requests to speak on items that are not on our agenda this evening?
No.
Okay, it just buzzed on. All right, we're on to our final item. Excuse me, we do have item 12 and 13. So our second, our next item up is the public hearing reviewing the Planning Commission's approval and modifications of P-19-0128 and P-19-0129, design review. And this is a staff report. I understand, Councilmember Balch, you have a comment to make prior to us listening to this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Brown. So as a Planning Commissioner, I sat and heard this item. So as a result of due process, I am unable to sit and hear this. I believe that I am going to turn off video and mute, and they may move me into a meeting room. I'm not sure. The anti-room, but I will be back for item 13, please.
Excellent, thank you. All right, could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Mayor and council, and our new council members particularly. Before we begin, I want to just provide a brief introduction for this item, which, as noted, has two parts, consideration of the conditional use permit and design review application for the proposed public storage project. And the second part is a requested reduction by the applicant for the affordable housing fee for the project. With us tonight, Megan Campbell, associate planner, who's been the project planner for this application since it was submitted in mid-2019, will be providing the presentation to you. We also have Ben Sigmund from Economic and Planning Systems. And although they were not the primary authors of the work, they could provide considerable assistance to staff in developing the land use valuation model that will be discussed this evening. And so Ben, at the appropriate time, will be available for questions. Finally, before Megan begins, I wanted to let you know that staff does propose to present both pieces of the item together as one larger presentation in two parts, since we really see that those two items dovetail and relate to one another fairly closely, although separate actions would be taken on each. Although that staff suggested approach, of course, we would be happy to treat it differently if that was a preference of the mayor or the council tonight.
Okay, so I think with that, I will share my screen. Okay, hopefully everybody can see my screen and hear me. Good evening, Mayor Brown and City Council. It's nice to see you here on Zoom. As Ellen mentioned, my name is Megan Campbell, and I'm here to talk to you today about a modification to the existing public storage facility at 3716 Stanley Boulevard. So the project involves removing seven existing storage buildings, the office, outdoor storage, and manager's unit, and then constructing a new office, manager's unit, one-story storage building, and three-story storage building, as well as related site improvements. The proposed project requires two applications, a design review application and a conditional use permit due to the external modifications, involves the size of the facility. The item before you also includes consideration of a fee reduction to the affordable housing fee for the project, as Ellen mentioned. The project was publicly noticed, and the city has received a number of public comments over the last couple of days, including requests for additional amenities and affordable housing fees, concern about the amount of amenities requested and process length to date, and concerns about increased traffic, pollution, and views. SaaS has also corresponded with the council regarding an updated valuation, which I'll detail a little bit later in the presentation. And then the applicant has corresponded with the council regarding the amenity valuation, the process, and also expressed a willingness to explore roof alternatives. So the Planning Commission reviewed the design review and conditional use permit applications for the project in a workshop on August 12th, and then in a public hearing on October 28th. And the affordable housing fee request falls under the purview of the city council, so this is not considered by the commission. During the commission's review of the project, the main discussion at hand involved the building mass and scale, the orange color, and the amenities and mitigations proposed. The commission, on a four-to-one vote, approved the subject application based on the project analysis, designer review criteria, the CUP findings, and subject to 97 conditions. Commissioner Allen dissented, specifically noting concerns with the orange on the one-story building. And during the commission's deliberations with respect to her decision, she cited General Plan, Community Character Element Policies 15 and 16, and related programs. So Program 15.3, which requires developers to use attractive colors minimizing bright franchise colors, Policy 16, which discourages franchise and prototype architecture, and then Program 16.1, which notes to work with development applicants to modify formula design. And then on November 17th, the council called up the action for commission review, the commission action for review. And the council may affirm the commission's approval without changes, modify the approval, or overturn the commission's decision. And then on December 8th, the applicant did submit modified plans for review by the council. The site plan, parking, circulation, general building forms remained the same, but the major changes really relate to the building design. Some minor square footage changes, a slight change in the landscape plan, and then retention of a manager's unit on site. The agenda report is far more detailed, but my presentation will give some high-level details. But I'll focus on the building design, the project amenities and mitigations, and then the affordable housing fee. But I can definitely get into the other details as needed, so please let me know if any specific questions come up that I don't address. So as Ellen mentioned, we split up the presentation into sort of two parts, one about the project, one about the street. But I plan to go through all of it. I'm happy to stop halfway through and we can answer questions, whatever the council prefers. So we'll start with the project. First, I'll orient everyone to the site. The subject site is situated between downtown and the eastern boundary of the city. Current access to the site is off of Stanley Boulevard. Adjacent uses to the west include residential, Erby, and Sunflower Hill. And then there's additional residential to the north across Stanley, and to the south across the Arroyo, with a variety of commercial uses, auto repair, warehousing, and retail, among other uses to the east. The 6.59 acre site, and it has an existing public storage facility comprising of 14 single-story storage buildings, a manager's unit, and a small office. A self-storage facility has been operating here since the 1970s. There's currently an 104-foot wide even on the south side of the lot, which was previously dedicated by the property owner to be used for Nevada Street White Ebroay and related public utility easement, and that's approximated here with the red line. Nevada Street is constructed, it was constructed by Erby, but it's not currently represented in this photo quite yet. And the aerials take a little time to catch up. But the actual roadway requires less than this full easement width. So once the final design is accepted, public storage will amend the easement and reduce the dedication area to approximately this blue line here. I'm giving you this as background as it relates to the floor area ratio, which we'll go over in a little bit. So as I mentioned, this project requires two applications. The first is a conditional use permit. And the focus of the conditional use permit is really around the operational characteristics of the project. SaaS finds the proposed operations of the facility are appropriate, including the proposed hours, gate access, maximum employees on site. The proposed use is also conducted indoors with the existing outdoor storage being removed. And the facility is required to adhere to the city's noise ordinance. One of the changes in the new plan submitted by the applicant is to retain the manager's unit on site. This not only adds a housing unit, but is considered an added safety measure to the project. There's already an existing public storage facility located here, as I mentioned, and the city has no reason to believe that the increased size of the facility will generate substantially more noise, traffic, compromise the parking supply, or otherwise adversely the site or the surrounding properties. And as conditioned, the applicant will be required to mitigate any future nuisances that may occur. So moving on to the design, the design review application, the focus is more the site plan, design, the physical alterations to the property. The proposed project complies with all of the regulations in the Service Commercial Zoning District, the CS District, which the project is in, including setbacks, height, floor area ratio, and parking, as detailed in the Planning Commission report attached to the packet. I will add that the floor area ratio assumes that that easement width is reduced, as I previously mentioned. So there are two conditions of approval that you see in the proposed conditions of approval, which address this necessary easement reduction. That's Condition 15 and 43, just for your reference. The project's conformance with the general plan density is really dependent on the amenities, mitigations, and the employee density, which I'll get into a little bit later. I'll first describe some of the site characteristics, and then we'll get into the amenities and mitigations. This is the proposed site plan, and the internal circulation will largely remain unaltered with the main access drives north to south across the property. A new access point will be added on the new Nevada Street, so located here. And that's for the public. It's accessed through a gate, so there's not going to be cut-through traffic through the site. There's gates on both sides. And then a third access point is added just north of west, east, sorry, just east of the other access point, but that's just for emergency service access only, so not for public access. Parking and moting zones are provided throughout the site around the various buildings. And the new office is located on the Stanley frontage side, right along Stanley there, while the storage buildings are set back from Stanley. So the new three-story building is set back about 390 feet from Stanley, and the new one-story storage building is about 589 feet from Stanley. And they're also separated by existing buildings, both on this site and adjacent sites. Those new storage buildings are sited much closer to the Nevada Street side, ranging from about 22 and a half to 75 feet away from that new easement. SaaS finds that the site plan, particularly the sighting of the three-story building away from the residential uses and towards the commercial uses that have their back of house facing the three-story building, is appropriate for the site. So as I mentioned, the building design is the biggest change in the applicant's new plans that were submitted on December 8th, the most substantial change occurring to the colors, materials, and roof forms. So here's a slide which shows the prior design. And the new design is inspired by and incorporates design elements from Erby Ranch and Sunflower Hill, which are those adjacent residential developments that I mentioned. So these are photos of those existing developments, just to orient you to their designs. And then here's the new design proposed by Public Storage. So the building design of the three buildings varies across the buildings, as you can see, but they generally incorporate the same elements across the elevation. The proposed building forms are largely the same as what the Planning Commission reviewed, similar inset projections, maintaining and even increasing, in some cases, the degree of articulation that you see on the building. The maximum heights will increase slightly to accommodate the new roof form, but some other elements of the building have been decreased in height, and all proposed heights do comply with the zoning, as I mentioned. The proposed materials include horizontal board and button siding, vertical lap siding, split-faced block on the storage buildings, standing seam metal roofs and awnings on the storage buildings, a shingle roof on the office building, and shingles on the office building. This is the colors and materials board. It includes grays, whites, and browns, as you can see. And I just wanted to note that all of the orange was removed from the new buildings proposed. And I also wanted to point out that Public Storage did agree to paint the existing buildings on the site, so the orange that exists on the roll-up doors and everything on those existing buildings, they did agree to remove. In SaaS view, the new design balances a residential style, including replicating materials and design elements from the nearby residential developments with the commercial use of the site as a storage facility. Due to the new application of materials, the storage building's perceived mass is broken up into smaller components. So you can see in the elevation there, the white components are highlighted, whereas the darker elements sort of visually recede. So SaaS finds the new design to be significantly more compatible with the neighboring residential properties and supports the modification. I'll also point out that the storage buildings include this bandrol blazed windows, so the windows you're seeing on the three-story building, which are opaque, so that'll minimize any off-site impacts that may have been caused from interior lighting if they had been transparent windows. The proposal includes a planting plan that really focuses on the two frontages, so the Stanley and the Nevada side. It includes some planting along that eastern boundary, as well as on the eastern side of the existing buildings, but really focusing on the frontages. One of the changes in the applicant's new plans that they submitted was one of the was one of the tree species, which will provide enhanced screening. So here you can see renderings with the landscaping included. And staff finds that the landscaping is suitable for the proposal. It greatly improves upon the existing landscaping on the site there today, provides screening to soften the massing of those new buildings, and enhances the streetscape on both the Stanley and Nevada frontages. So circling back to this general plan density, as I mentioned, it's sort of dependent on the amenities and mitigations, but as well as the traffic generation and employee density. The general plan designation for this site indicates an average allowable development density expresses floor area ratio is thirty-five percent. The general plan also notes that the maximum FAR for the site is sixty percent. There's a program of the general plan, fifteen point five, of the land use element, that notes the project should conform to the average density, so the thirty-five percent, unless it provides sufficient amenities and mitigations, then it can go up to the sixty percent. Additionally, the land use element notes that certain uses, such as warehouses, where employee density and traffic generation are minimal, that FAR can go above sixty percent, as long as it meets the allowable FAR in the zoning. So this zoning district, CS, allows one-hundred percent FAR. So this site can have one-hundred percent FAR if sufficient amenities and mitigations are incorporated and employee density and traffic are minimal. And this project is proposing almost one-hundred percent of that FAR. So in terms of employee density and traffic, the project proposes to have no more than three on-shift employees at once, and they did provide a traffic, trip generation traffic analysis, which the city's traffic division concurs with the analysis, that the project will have low daily trip generation, and concludes that the project is not expected to significantly impact the transportation system. And then in terms of the amenities, on the screen here, you'll see the amenities proposed, which are three-hundred-thousand dollars of funding to the city to construct a public trail on the south side of Nevada, providing funding to the city for trail maintenance for this portion of the trail for five years, which totals fourteen thousand dollars, construct a public seating area on the south side of the property, so along that new Nevada sidewalk, valued at about six thousand dollars, and then include enhanced green building measures beyond those required by the code. So installation of solar panels on the roof for the new building's power needs, and then green building measures to meet LEED Silver certified rating. And both of these would increase the construction cost per square foot. In regards to the trail, the trail segment proposed to be funded with this project is part of the Arroyo del Valle, the ADV Trail, and the Trails Master Plan. And when the Trails Master Plan was updated in two thousand and nineteen, the plan identified the ADV Trail as the highest priority to the city, and it also noted that it's relatively complex and expensive. So funding of this magnitude is beneficial for closing that trail network. And then in regards to the green building measures, one of the city's priorities is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And the second highest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the city is associated with buildings. So by constructing the subject project to meet LEED Silver and the solar panels size to meet the energy needs of the facility, the project will be minimizing its emissions footprint. During and since the planning commission's consideration of the project, it was suggested that the analysis of the relative financial benefits of the increase...
Megan, before you go on, since that's a natural break, can I just ask?
Absolutely.
If council members have any questions, I'll ask Vice Mayor Narum, any questions? So far, we'll obviously have more questions at the end, but I just...
I do, back on the amenities. I'm not clear why the robust landscaping along Nevada, and, you know, the whole cleanup of that is not considered a project amenity. I understand it's hard to necessarily put a value on that. But from what I've seen, that landscaping is, what's being proposed, is definitely far more robust than a typical project, and I think provides an amenity, so I'm not clear why that's not listed. And I'm also... I still haven't gotten a good answer. It's my understanding that this property owner gave some land to be able to construct, to finish the construction of Nevada. And I don't understand why that land is also not considered a community benefit. It's got value, and if they didn't give it, they could have more FAR. Maybe you could comment on that, please?
Yeah, I can respond to both of those items. In terms of the sort of upgrades to the site, and I would say that includes both the landscaping, as well as just the overall improvements to the quality of the buildings and appearance of the site. As you mentioned, it is hard to value those things. And really, staff, and I think we as a community, look at those things as sort of part and parcel of investment. Is that there's an investment that comes with a project that helps to upgrade sites, brings, certainly brings an amenity and a benefit, it's not disputing that at all. But it's not really something that we would sort of tend to put over and above what would typically be expected with any high-quality project in Pleasanton. So it's not valued monetarily for those reasons. With respect to the easement, that easement has been dedicated, or was dedicated for many years prior to this project coming forward, associated with the future right-of-way for Nevada Street. And so there was not a trigger of this project that required that dedication. It was in place, was sort of a given, and sort of baked into the value of the site and the expectation of development that that easement would have to be preserved and ultimately dedicated to the city for the future right-of-way. So for similar reasons, it's not included in the amenity contribution. Obviously, looking very holistically at this site and the project investments that Public Storage may have made in the site over time, there is some value to the city in having that easement. However, staff did not feel it was as appropriate to include it as part of the amenity contribution of this project in that calculation.
Okay, I just, I, you know, we, I've asked this before, and I still don't understand why you, why giving land for us to complete that Nevada Street, which is really nice now, does not have some value. I just, you know, unless we paid them for the easement, it would seem that there should be some value assigned to that land. I just, I, I'm... I just, I don't understand. I don't know what else to say. If we had to go and, you know, do eminent domain to get it, we would be paying for it. And so even though it's a, you know, a friendly taking, if you will, it still has some value.
I think Ellen's challenge, as she tried to articulate, is how to quantify it. We don't dispute at all that there's an aesthetic value to the landscaping and the new architecture. Say, monetary benefit to the city for the dedication of the road, as well as having a cooperative effort on the part of the property owner to enable Nevada to be extended. We could have, we could have been confronted with a situation where we could have gone to court, spent legal fees, defining better the width and use of the easement. We had, we had none of that. Quite the opposite. So certainly a policy consideration for the council when they're looking at the amenity package. But we just found it really difficult to put a number on it. But it certainly benefited the city and the public in the future.
Okay, that's all I have right now, thank you.
Thank you, and that reminded me, I forgot to mention that this is a quasi-judicial decision, and that means that we all, especially just for our new council member, we're asking questions but keeping an open mind until the public hearing is closed. So I forgot to mention that. I have a couple of questions as well. But Julie, would you like to go next, or I can?
I have a lot of questions, but I'll defer most of them till later. I'm just gonna ask a quick one, since we were talking about the landscape. The property after the second half butts right up against the new housing development, and right up against the yards. Is there any landscape going to buffer between those lovely new homes and this project, anything that will screen or buffer?
Yeah.
You can see, oh, sorry, go ahead, Megan.
No, go ahead, Ellen.
Yeah, I think you got this one, go ahead.
Okay, I was just gonna say, here's the landscape plan here. And on the bottom of the screen, you can see the new proposed one-story storage building, and there is some landscaping that's gonna happen there that sort of buffers the new building from the, from Erby. There is some being planted there, including trees and other shrubs and plants.
Oh, just at the very front with that, or the very back, I think this is, of the project, right? And just right there, but there will be a number, how many of those existing one-story units will stay in place? And I can see from the picture that the units go all the way to the fence. So there is not...
I have a couple of points. You're correct, so there are existing storage units. And so that space is needed for vehicles to circulate around the buildings. So there's no landscaping proposed around the existing buildings. There is landscaping, however, on the Sunflower Hill and Erby Ranch site, and then certainly on the Nevada Street end of the project, a fairly good buffer that's provided by the existing parking lot for Sunflower Hill, and then the Sunflower Hill building itself. And then there's also landscaping along the perimeter that was planted by Erby that is, right now, relatively small and immature, but will ultimately provide some improved screening between that existing facility and the Erby Ranch homes.
But is there between, I can see where the screening that is there would be between the Erby Ranch, or the Sunflower Hill. But as you continue, there is not going to be any between the storage facility and the homes, right?
There's no additional planting proposed adjacent to the existing storage building. So going back for the reason that I mentioned, which is that they need to preserve the vehicle circulation there. I just wanted to note that there is landscaping on the Erby Ranch side that was planted in part to screen those homes from this, you know, from this existing storage facility that's there today. And so that landscaping is in place and will mature over time. But for this project specifically, it is correct that no additional landscaping is provided along the existing storage units.
Okay, so there was some planted on the Erby Ranch along the yards of the Erby Ranch homes? That will grow up, that are trees that will screen?
Selection of trees and shrubs along there, because that developer had an interest in buffering their project from this existing storage facility that's there today.
Okay, thank you for that. My understanding was that there was not going to be any screening, so I'm glad to hear that. All right, thank you.
Great. So I tell you what, Valerie, I'll let you go last, since it's your first day. I have a question about the trees. When I talked to the applicant, and I think almost all of us have spoke to the applicant as full disclosure, those red trees that look kind of like a plum tree, the applicant told me they were considering or were going to switch those out to evergreens. I wondered if that happened, Megan?
The tree that was switched, I believe, was a pine. I think the applicant, we can ask this question of them when they come on the call here to present. But I'm pretty sure that the tree that was switched was a pine to an evergreen variety. But I'd like to confirm with the applicant when they hop on.
Okay, and the location of the solar panels. I wondered if you can give me some information about where they're going to be and if they'll be visible to any of the adjacent developments?
So the location of the solar panels is something we asked for during the building permit plan stage of the project, but the idea is that they would be screened. The buildings include a parapet where their mechanical equipment and all of the sort of things that you don't want to see necessarily on the roof will be behind. So the idea would be that the panels would also be behind that parapet.
Okay, great, that's perfect. It's a great answer. And then I also saw from the applicant some new elevations of the buildings with more of a flat rooftop. Is that something that we have a decision for today? Or is that something you're gonna bring up later?
Yeah, so the applicant had indicated a willingness to do sort of a flat roof as opposed to the pitch, and I'm happy to share those plans. I actually have them here, I can switch my screen share over to that, if now is the right time to do that. Let me, give me just a moment here. I think this is the right screen, let's see. Are you seeing plans here now? So this is the current plans that were included in your packet with the roof pitches, you can see there, and then this is the new one. So you can see that the pitch sort of goes a little bit flatter there on the roof. And I'll show a couple of different angles. So this is looking from Nevada Street. You see the one-story storage on the left and the three-story on the right. And then there, you can see they're a bit flatter.
Would that reduce the parapet sheltering?
It's a good question. I think we should ask the applicant if that changes the parapet. My understanding is the parapet is actually sort of behind this little wall here, but that's something that they should clarify.
Okay, great. That's my questions. Councilmember Arkin, do you have any questions at this midpoint? And of course, we'll have time later, too.
Yeah, I'll probably have some questions later, but just right now, and it's just a quick question. Back to, on the PowerPoint, the list of amenities, it mentioned the photovoltaic solar. Maybe I'm not understanding something here. That's listed as an amenity. That ends up reducing the operating costs of a business. So how do we consider that an amenity to the city?
It's a good question, it's true. It would reduce the operating costs in the long term. There's obviously a cost upfront that it would cost to install them. But we would consider it an amenity because it reduces the greenhouse gas emissions caused by this project. So we're updating our climate action plan right now. We just did an inventory for that plan, and it includes, you know, where are all the emissions coming from in the city? And the second biggest, next to transportation, is from buildings. So we would consider it an amenity because it would ultimately reduce the emissions coming from this site, which is a goal of the city. And it's not currently something that they would be required to do by code or by any other policy that we have. They would be potentially required to be solar-ready, but not actually install the panels. So it's sort of going above and beyond what they would otherwise have to do.
Okay, thank you. Don't get me wrong, I think it's wonderful to have. I just was trying to figure out how that lists, yeah.
I mean, you're right, there is a cost savings there in the long run, over time.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question related to that, please? I agree with you, Valerie, that I also questioned why that would be identified as an amenity because it really is, the benefit is very strong to the project. But it is not given an estimated value in the amenity proposal, right? So it really...
Yeah, so I think we treated it sort of as a wash, that the additional cost of installing the PV panels and meeting the additional green building code was not used to escalate the sort of value of the amenity provided. It was sort of built into the construction cost, so it's sort of a balanced thing in terms of the benefit. But yeah, certainly those things do provide an efficiency and a cost-saving operationally, as... But yeah, certainly those things do provide a efficiency and a and a cost saving operationally, as Megan suggested and Councilmember Arkin mentioned as well.
Right. All right, thank you.
Great. Thank you for the break, Megan, and I think we're ready for the next portion of your presentation.
And I'm happy to stop again. I know this is sort of a hall getting through all this info, so I'm happy to to have another pause here after we get through the project description and before the feed. Um, so I think my screen is still shared. So during and and since the planning commission's consideration of the project, it was suggested that we do an analysis of the relative financial benefits of that increased floor area ratio versus the value of the amenities that we were just discussing. So staff has undertaken an analysis to evaluate the value created from that additional FAR. And this includes a review of inputs such as the expected return to the applicant in rental revenue from the additional square footage, including adjustments for vacancy and operating expenses, as well as the cost of constructing the new building. So reflecting site development, soft costs and other project costs. SAG requested a courtesy review of both the methodology and key assumptions by Economics and Planning Systems, EPS, and a consultant, they're a consultant who has extensive experience in this field and who has worked with the city on a number of past projects. They confirmed that our estimate developed appeared reasonable and in line with industry standards. So in developing these estimates, it's important to note that small adjustments to the inputs, for example, square footage, cost of construction, rental rates per unit, it can cause a significant shift in the overall valuation. So for this reason, we tried to be reasonable and not overly aggressive with those assumptions. Based on the evaluation, the increased floor area ratio is estimated to yield in the range of 338,000 in residual land value. And so we sent an updated we sent an updated basically this and a memo to council, which is the valuation and the breakdown today. And we can get into all of the inputs and details as needed, but I did want to point out a few corrections that were made to the assumption, including the square footage, the cost of the permits and fees, and basic site work and demo costs. So based on the described analysis and comparing the estimated additional value of the square footage, they're providing essentially 100% of the residual land value and amenities and mitigations based on those estimates. So a consistency checklist pursuant to SECO guidelines, section 15183 was prepared. And the checklist concludes that the project would be consistent with the development density established by the existing zoning and general plan policies for which the previous EIR was certified. And accordingly, it concludes that no further environmental review needs to be done. The Pleasanton Municipal Code sets forth the designer view criteria and conditional use permit findings that we talked about earlier. And given the design considerations incorporated, including the new design removing the orange, the site design, the surrounding context of the site, and the proposed operational characteristics, SAG suggests that the project is appropriate for the site and recommends the council adopt draft resolution attachment one, upholding the commission's approval of the project as modified with the new plan. And if determined appropriate, any modification to those amenities and mitigations that we've been discussing. So here might be another good breakpoint. If there's any other questions on the project before we move on to the affordable housing fee, I'll defer to Mayor Brown.
Mayor Brown, if could I could I make a just a clarifying statement at this point?
Would you please?
I just wanted to point out to the council that the hearing on the conditional that's before the council tonight, this is really a new hearing, independent of the planning commission hearing and the planning commission's decision. So that being the case, the council does have the authority to either approve the project, condition the project, or to deny the application. So I just wanted to clarify that this is a new hearing before the council tonight. Thanks.
Can I ask for clarification on that? So that means that if we if there was no decision by the council tonight, it would not return back to the planning commission's approval, would not, correct?
Right. If there was no direction tonight by a majority of the council, this would that would result in no action on the application. And it would not go back to the planning commission unless a new application was resubmitted.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a follow up? Is there a time requirement before they could submit a new application? Or is there a requirement that they would have to submit a completely different application?
Under our zoning ordinance, if the council denied the application, they would have to wait a year to resubmit the application. However, if the council took no action on the application, they wouldn't have to wait that one-year time period.
They would or would not?
Would would not. It's only only when the project's denied that the one-year time period applies.
And can you explain once again, when this was brought up at the council meeting, it was brought up as an appeal of the planning commission decision, and now you're calling it a review and a completely separate action. Could you explain what what constitutes that or why this is no longer an appeal?
Yes, yeah, as you as you recall, this was a part of the zoning administrators' report on the consent calendar at the last meeting. Councilmember Test, I believe, wanted this item to come back to the council. There was no objection and the council voted on the consent calendar. Therefore, staff brought this item back to you under the city council review provisions of the zoning ordinance.
So I don't know if this is the appropriate time to get into this, but you know, I had I known, I would not, I certainly wouldn't have agreed to bring this back and review it if it was going to become a whole new item as opposed to an appeal of the decision.
If if that was not the council's intent and the council wants to clarify that tonight before the public hearing and choose not to have the public hearing, the council can choose to do that.
Okay, we'll ask about then before the public.
Well, the problem is, though, that we've changed all the, you know, the people in the chairs, so it's a whole different group from when this was done.
City attorney, this is still the governing body, even though there's different people in the chairs. Is that right?
Yes, yes, you're correct.
Thank you. Thank you. And we'll probably draw on your wisdom later. Right. Thank you, Megan. Go ahead and continue, please.
All right. Let's see, my screen is still shared. Okay, so we'll move on to the affordable housing fee. And this action, as a reminder, is under it's under the purview of the council, so the commission did not review this. This is the the first time we're talking about it here. So I'll give a little bit of background. The city of Pleasanton adopted its first low-income housing fee in the late 1970s, and it was amended most recently in 2018. The purpose of the fee is to assist the city in meeting the affordable and moderate income housing goals as established in the general plan. The current affordable housing fee was determined as part of a NEXA study prepared by EPS. And the EPS study set the basis for the affordable housing fee, which is adjusted annually based on the Consumer Price Index. The public storage would be classified as an industrial use for which the current master fee schedule establishes a rate of $13.02 per square foot. So the subject project includes a net increase of 165,660 square feet. And so based on the current affordable housing fee, the they would be required to pay over $2 million for this fee. The methodology in the EPS study is based on several data-driven assumptions to establish the fee, including employment density and generation for various types of uses. The study assumes 400 square feet per employee for the office, light industrial, and R and D category into which public storage would fall. For this project, the study would assume 414 employees, and that's just for the new square footage. However, according to the applicant, the project will actually have a maximum of five employees. The project is also providing an onsite manager's unit, which will help decrease the housing needs created by the project. The municipal code has the following provision. The city council may reduce the affordable housing fee if the project developer can demonstrate, one, that the proposed use will generate substantially fewer workers than the uses which have established the fee, and two, the building design is unable to house another use without substantial renovation. And examples of uses that are called out in the code include exclusive storage buildings. The purpose of this provision is to recognize that some projects may generate lower than typical numbers of employees than those assumed used in the calculation of fee rates. And in the event a fee reduction is approved, that there's minimal risk that the facility can then be converted to a more intensive use. So on November 11th, the city received a formal request from public storage asking for a reduction in the affordable housing fee. And the request is attached to your agenda report and cites previous fee reduction approvals, building design, and employee density. A reduction of 98.8% of fees of the affordable housing fee for the entire project is requested, and that's about $26,000 based on the current rate. The city has approved reductions of the affordable housing fee for past storage projects, and staff identifies two examples here. One from 1997, the other from 2002, where an affordable housing fee reduction request was reviewed and approved by the city council, which is described in your agenda report. And in both cases, the reduction was about 77, 78% for the storage component of the project. So no reduction was approved for the office square footage nor the manager's unit in either project. So as we review the current projects against that provision in the code, which allows the reduction to fees, we need to look at two things, the building design and the employee generation. In terms of building design, the building has limited entries and exits, narrow corridors, and its interior space is subdivided into all of those storage units. The exterior windows on the storage building have that spandrel glazing, that opaque glazing, which, you know, is an external design aesthetic, but not actual transparency. And then further exclusive storage buildings are specifically called out as examples of uses that can't house another use without substantial renovation. And then beyond the building design, the project's actual employee density is really not commensurate with the employee density assumed for typical industrial use. The EPS study, as I mentioned, assumes one employee per 400 square feet. And so, as I mentioned, that's 414 employees for this project. And then the applicant notes it's actually five employees, which is 1.2% of that assumed density. And five employees for that new net space, that 165,000 of new net space, is one employee per 33,000 square feet. So SAG completed additional research to determine whether the proposed number of employees appears reasonable, that five employees compared to industry industry data for similar self-storage facilities. A number of NEXA studies reviewed by SAG utilized the rate established by the San Diego Association of Governments, Sandag, and that was for one employee per 15,000 square feet. And this number appears to be widely used in traffic studies and other analyses prepared by local government. So on that basis, the applicant's proposed reduction is not dramatically different from other studies reviewed, but the applicant suggested one per 33,000 square feet is a little bit on the low side of the one per 15,000 square feet that we evaluated. And if that one per 15,000 were applied to the the new net square footage, the subject project would actually generate 11 employees. So that's about 2.7% of the assumed 414 employees. So SAG outlines five potential paths forward, including option one, which is no fee reduction. And that would be 100% of the fees at a little bit over $2 million. And then option two, which is reducing the fee in a manner consistent with past practice. So that would be a 0% reduction for the office and manager's unit, and then a reduction of about 77% for the storage component. You have option three, which is the applicant's request 98.8% reduction for the entire project, so the office, manager's unit, and storage component. You have option four, which is kind of a hybrid approach. It suggests 0% reduction for the office and then a reduction of 98.8% for the storage area. And in this option, we suggest not including a fee for the new unit. And then option five, which we're calling the typical methodology approach, which is a 0% reduction for the office and then a 97.3% reduction for the storage, which applies that Sandag ratio of employee generation. And then in this option, again, we suggest no fee for the new unit. So based on the provisions in the code allowing for a fee reduction, the NEXA study, employee generation assumption of 414 employees, the actual generation, which according to the applicant is five employees, and according to our Sandag methodology, is 11 employees. The design of the building and the past resident for approving such reductions, SAG suggests that a fee reduction for this project would be appropriate. The agreed reduction is at the discretion of the council. The the code is clear and its intent to provide flexibility to reduce fees for exactly this type of circumstance. And SAG believes a reduction is warranted, even if not at the rate suggested by the applicant. So looking at the options, option one, charging the full fee, and option two, aligning with past practice, it results in a fee that SAG finds significantly disproportionate with the employee impact. And further, the rationale for the fee in option two, the past practice is unclear in reviewing the minutes and reports that we could find. Options three, four, and five all are supportable. Option three being the applicant's request for the hybrid approach and five, basing it on that typical methodology. SAG suggests option five is the best option forward as it uses a typical methodology and reflects the most balanced approach, benefits the city's Affordable Housing Fund, and it addresses housing needs generated by the project. So with that, SAG recommends the council adopt the draft resolution attachment to approving a reduction to the affordable housing fee, reflecting SAG's recommended option five. Think I'm done. So I think that's all I've got for you today. Thanks for bearing with me. Here are the two recommendations about the two parts of the project that we have. We're available for for any questions. I think I'll stop sharing my screen and turn it back to Mayor Brown.
Thank you, Megan. Again, any clarifying questions before we open the public hearing? Yes, Councilmember Testa.
Let's see, supportable was the term that was used for for several of the options. And yet it is up to the discretion of the council. And so I wanted to ask our city attorney to give some clarification on the different options and the fact that explaining how the NEXA study impacts the discretion of the council and does it?
Sure. Yeah, as the council's aware, the city did receive a letter from the applicant's attorney. And basically, that letter alleges that our affordable housing fees subject to the state's Mitigation Fee Act, which requires a nexus. And that several of staff's options, they allege, aren't consistent with the Mitigation Fee Act. So the applicant's attorney and I disagree on this point. These types of affordable housing fees are really treated as other land use regulations where the city has broad discretion under its police powers to to adopt and impose these types of affordable housing fees. So the courts view these, because they're treated as land use regulations, the courts do give deference to the city in how they apply these sort of requirements. And that being the case, the courts have made clear that the Mitigation Fee Act doesn't apply to these types of affordable housing fees as it does to other types of development fees. So that being the case, I do feel that the council does have discretion on how they impose the fee, especially with the language of our code. And I think that any of the staff's options are legally supportable.
And and that's that's great to hear. That's what I wanted to confirm. That's what I wanted to confirm, that all of the options are, in fact, legally supportable, even to option A, which would, or option one, which would be to keep the $2 million, but also option two, three, four, and five would be equally legally supportable. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for explaining that. And can I ask, I think probably Ellen would be the right person to answer this question. On the affordable housing fees, it's a significant issue right now because could you explain our anticipated new state requirements for affordable housing and the demand that the city is going to, is anticipating? And I'll say that because I'm trying to, there's language like "enhance the public welfare", that affordable housing fees, in fact, are not simply tied as, what I think Dan was explaining, to a specific project, but in fact are considered a matter of public welfare and the public good for the community. So Ellen, are you the right person to ask to explain our upcoming demand of affordable housing?
Sure. I think as we've noted to the council in earlier reports, the regional housing allocation process has been ongoing for a year or more, shaping up to allocate somewhere in the range of 4,800 to 5,000 units in Pleasanton for which we will have to plan in our next housing element cycle. So that will certainly present a challenge as far as meeting the affordable housing needs, most of which require some form of subsidy to help support, especially the below-market rate units that will be part of that overall arena. It's not all affordable housing. I think a significant proportion of it, however, is. And so certainly the Affordable Housing Fund helps to support various programs and efforts to build and get people into affordable housing in Pleasanton.
Okay, great. Because one more question for you. These affordable housing fees do help. Do we have significant other funding sources for affordable housing?
Perhaps Brian could add to this, but I might say it's principally through grant funding is where we get other funds or for these types of developer contributions are the principal mechanisms.
Okay, great.
I think it's primarily from residential development is where we get most of the money, but all development has to pay something.
Right. Because residential development certainly, they pay that amount that would equal that $2 million that was calculated. Is that right? I really am not sure about that. Brian?
It varies.
It varies. Okay. But they do pay, the residential does pay that a significant amount on the affordable housing?
If they don't construct required inclusionary housing, then they do have to pay a per-unit fee. That is, if not insignificant for housing. Before we move on, I wanted to make just a correction to my earlier statement regarding the landscaping. Megan, she reached out to the planner that was involved in Irby and noted that I was mistaken in my statement. So the backyards do not include landscaping that was planted by the project, just because the city doesn't typically landscape those backyards. There would be landscaping along the Sunflower Hill project. And perhaps the applicant could speak to the limitations of landscaping along those storage units. My understanding is that it's a challenge because of circulation in that area.
Well, thank you for clarifying that because I was very confused because, yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to make that correction since I had not represented it accurately for you.
I appreciate that. So I will stress then because along the Ruby, I mean, Irby Ranch section is a tiny little section compared to the stretch and all of the homes. And the point being, of course, that without any screening, without any buffer, the visual impacts are significant. So, all right, thank you for making that clarification and helping me understand that other point. All right. That was it for me for now. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Nairam, any questions?
Well, so can I just follow up on that? I'm a little bit confused then. Along most of Irby Ranch, the single-story units, nothing's being done to those. And isn't that correct?
That's correct. So all of those existing storage units are there today and would remain.
And the only one that's being built is at the Nevada side, and they are offsetting that to put in, I call it robust landscaping, between the unit or the building and Sunflower Hill. But I'm a little confused about the landscaping along the existing buildings that have been there and are part of the drive aisle to get not only the customers, but also fire engines and emergency vehicles and so forth through there. So do we have, are there any options to make them, to have them add that in? Or is that pavement pretty much required for the, in particular for the fire engines?
So that would be a clarifying question the applicant perhaps could shed some light on. Right now, it's paved, and vehicles do circulate around those buildings, both the customer vehicles and possibly as well, emergency vehicles as well. So some drive aisle does need to be retained at the end. The buildings are also staggered so that some of the buildings actually butt all the way up to the fence line. So clearly, you could not include landscaping for those buildings because there's no room there against the fence.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just, I mean, the clarifying point being, it is what I had been told is what we just clarified in that it really just is not possible to put landscaping. And while that may be the way it is now and will be on the single stories, when the other side goes up to three stories, it does dramatically change the visual impact. So that's what I was clarifying. That was my understanding. Thank you.
Councilmember Arkin. Any questions?
Yes. Yeah, I do. I have a couple. One is on the new drawings, the new rendition. I don't see any drawing that shows what the new monument sign will look like. Do we have that?
So signage is not included in this application, and there's a condition of the approval that does specifically note that. That's not untypical, that signage is often the last thing that gets reviewed and is typically a separate application and a staff-level review. We do have guidance in our municipal code around signage quantity, height setbacks, lighting, and so on, that staff will look to to guide the signage approval. But this project does not propose signage in this application.
Okay, so that would not come back to us? That would be more of a staff approval for signage? Is that right?
It's a staff, yeah, it's a staff-level design review.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And one other question I had, and this refers to the amenities question, issue. If we were to, if the council were to ask for an additional amenity, something in the area of this project that would be a benefit to the city, is there something the city can reference that would be something that we could consider?
So if the council had an interest in doing that, we would probably come back with a, after scanning the area, for necessary improvements and bring that forward and have you validate that that's a reasonable amenity within the area. But I don't feel comfortable tonight identifying what that might be. We've got some pedestrian gaps along Nevada between the Humane Society and headquarters, but there might be some other fire headquarters, just to be clear on Nevada. But there might be, you know, some other areas that are more pressing that we're not prepared to answer tonight.
Can I ask on, related to that?
So just if we don't mind, Valerie, are you done with your questions?
Yeah, I believe so. Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And just to clarify, Member Arkin, if that was the direction of the council, I just, we just would want to come back after we have an internal discussion about what the best priority is for the prioritizing of those additional funds, if that was the council's pleasure.
So again, related to that, if I can ask a related question. Would it be appropriate to say that the amenity might be a community amenity be directed towards affordable housing?
So I would, I would, so if you're asking me, is there, is there, after you review the information in the presentation here, the public hearing, the council's pleasure was to propose an additional contribution. Could you direct that additional contribution towards the affordable housing fee? The answer is yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Or alternatively, like, Councilmember Arkin, I think, is suggesting, is there another amenity in the area where those funds can get allocated? Third option, right, the third option is you can reallocate the $300,000 that's dedicated to the trail to another priority that potentially we would bring back to you that is more pressing and more important. So there's a number of options that it'll do to the council.
Right. With that, I don't think we have any other questions, at least at this time. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and allow the applicant 10 minutes. And there is quite a few topics that staff said hopefully the applicant can answer. I made some notes. But if the applicant, representative for the applicant is available, if the clerk could set the timer for 10 minutes, and I understand that there's a lot of material to be covered, so have some flexibility there if you need it. But Brian, are you the speaker for the applicant?
I am.
Okay, great. Well, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. Appreciate being here this evening, a pretty important night, actually. Hopefully, it'll be important for me as well. And I'd like to say that, once again, Megan has stolen my thunder. She, this is the third time now, she's given a comprehensive presentation before I've had a chance to give mine, and all of a sudden, there's not a lot left on my presentation. So what I'm going to probably focus on a little bit more is focusing on the items that were discussed here in a lot of the Q and A that came up, but I am going to screen share here and share my presentation. Bear with me a second, please. And let me swap these, and you should be able to see the presentation now.
Yes, sure can.
Great. So a lot of this background was already covered by Megan, and I'm probably going to say a lot in this presentation. But I think the most important thing to state is that we've been working on this a long time. We started with Jerry Bowden back in the day, over three years ago. I came in exploring the desire to redevelop this site as a possible candidate, and he immediately, for lack of a better term, jumped down my throat about the Nevada Street Extension. And I said, let me try to solve the problem. We, there was a roadblock. I went back to my folks, and I released the roadblock, in good faith, with the intent that the intended redevelopment of this site up to a 1.0 FAR, and at the time, we hadn't even explored an additional FAR above the 1.0, was definitely supported by staff at the time. So, you know, we followed the city's process every step of the way. We played good neighbor by dedicating Nevada Street. We didn't have to. That could have been a legal battle, as Nelson mentioned, or as Nelson mentioned. And all we're trying to do is reinvest in the community and build new state-of-the-art storage and remove the RV parking and the single-story drive-up along the side. We would have continued, we would have explored doing more and even built another building under the side. But again, the 1.0 FAR was a general plan limitation at the time. So that was not in the cards. You can, this is a wall of dates, but this is how many back and forths we've had since this process has started. Very significant. I cover the entire West Coast. I probably have about 30 projects, and this is by far the longest process that I have in all of my projects. Over the process, we've stepped back the third floor on both the east and west side in notches, which are still there, removed most of the orange, moved to the second floor. Even though we complied with all the zoning, we acquired direct story poles and go to a planning commission workshop, at which point we had very strong support, generally speaking. They appreciated the architecture. The biggest conversation was really about the amenity and where that amenity would be spent, whether it's right spending it on the trail or whether it should be somewhere else for bike purposes. That was a long discussion. And planning commission unanimously supported us. So we went back, and next thing you know, we had to go, despite that support, we had to step back the third floor even further, went from 10 to 28 feet on the third story, and moved to 48 to 75 feet. Zoning is 10. After those changes, we went back to planning commission, supported 4 to 1, only one dissenting vote, even though in discussion, there was verbal support. And then, of course, we were appealed, which has just come up for the first time. No discussion in the last month that this is not an appeal, that this is a review. That is absolute news. I've got Tamsin Plume with Holliday Knight. I'm here to address affordable housing in that as well. I have Pakistanzo, as you know. And we also have Karik Bochart with Ware Malcolm, our designers. So we have got them here for questions as well. And we've completely removed the orange, which is our brand. I know that the city's wishes, but, you know, that is damaging to our brand. A lot of discussion here related to amenity. I too believe that the Nevada Street dedication is an amenity, whether you can put a price on that or not. The fact that we played good neighbor and did that years in advance of this and forfeited the revenue that we could have held on to the entire time, you could put that lost revenue as an amenity. We are planning on improving the current street scene. We've got the 314, the solar, all the things mentioned before. We talked about the windfall. A lot of my discussion in here was related to that windfall, which there's since been an amended report where EPS fixed their numbers. And that windfall went from 2.4 down to $300,000 or $270,000, or actually $290,000. So no need to go through this, but you can see all my cool graphics of stuff popping up around the numbers. So what wasn't included in here is the lost revenue during construction. That's a fundamental flaw in the analysis by EPS. When you already have income and you would displace that income to build something new to then get future income, that would be factored into the analysis, not just ignored. And it actually is a drag on returns, which really makes it difficult to redevelop sites because of the current in-place revenues. So not only do we have the lost revenue for the lost storage square footage, but also the RV square footage. And of course, we've had the lost revenue for the RV lost due to the Nevada Street all along. So I'm not going to go through this, but there are major, major assumptions in there that there is acknowledgement that you can make small changes that have big impacts. In this instance, some of those small changes could have very In this instance, some of those small changes could have very big impacts, cap rates, I'm, I'm sure many of you are familiar with, but that's a, a significant multiplier, the smaller it gets, the more exponential it gets. So a simple change of 25 basis points can be gigantic and more than wipe out any perceived windfall. Same thing with return on investment, and there was absolutely inadequate financing costs in that analysis, and did, it barely even covers a year of interest expense, if that, without any, without any fees, origination costs or fees. I've got a whole table of variance explanations of all those major things that can impact, happy to go over those if you'd like. But as you can see, you know, cap rate sensitivity going from four and a half gives you a residual of 294,000, going to a five and off gives you a negative almost $6 million. And, and although it was stated that there was an attempt to use the fair numbers, the, the, if you were, if you were on a scale of one to 10, 10 being the most aggressive, they didn't go to 11, but they went to 10 on, on every single one of them. So based on discussion here, you know, there is no windfall in any discussion of a windfall at this point in the game, after we've negotiated and worked with staff all along, just doesn't seem appropriate. And we've, we've continued to rely on the integrity of the planning process and spend additional time and money to try to get here where we are today. Existing condition, there's beautiful Nevada Street in. We've already talked about this, above is where we started, then we did the setback. This is changes, Megan's already gone through all this, robust landscaping, so you won't even see the buildings anyway. And these are, this is the other alternative with the flat roofs. And so the affordable housing fee is becoming a very big topic tonight. It was, it's designed to fund housing for employees generated by the project. The base fee assumes 414 employees. The project will generate three employees. I conservatively included five, just to do it, to make sure that it wasn't a slip up. So 11 is obviously not accurate. I can tell you that even the largest properties in our entire network, which we have ones in New York that are almost 400,000 square feet, we do not have over six employees, maybe seven. Technology is only furthering this with e-rentals and other ways, kiosks, things like that, touchless. And COVID has sped that up. So we, as mentioned, three employees, we underwrote five, and, and the two prior approvals by the city in 97 and 2002, the reason those ratios are fundamentally different is because the assumption at that time, before the housing fees were updated, was on one employee per 600 square feet, it's now one employee per 400 square feet for the same industrial use. So when you look at the same number of employees by a much smaller denominator, it changes significantly. So we respectfully request that you, that the city council uphold the planning commission approval of our application, and that we, and you support our request for the affordable housing fee, option three, as requested by Public Storage. And we've got Tamsin here to discuss in more detail the affordable housing fee, because I think there's definitely some contention over legalities behind how this works. Tamsin?
Thank you, Brian, this is Tamsin Plume with Holland and Knight. I apologize, my camera is acting up the joys of working from home technology, and my children might possibly burst in on me because they're trying to go to bed right now, so I apologize in advance that that happens. I do fundamentally disagree. Obviously, you will be advised by your own city attorney, but I will advise you that your, it's currently adopted housing fee and all the ordinances that support it are subject to the mitigation fee act and the constitutional principles of nexus and proportionality. The language of your adopted fee, based on a nexus study that was prepared for the city, does tie very directly the number of employees generated by a project, that's the impact it's intended to support. And as discussed by staff and presented in their recommendations, it is, there is no relation between the full amount of the fee and the actual employees generated by this project. And it's also been noted, I don't know that was really ever discussed, but there will be a caretaker unit on site. So for the three employees, one will be housed on site, which has a significant additional potential reduction for the need for the fee. The total amount generated using three employees is less than 1% of the assumptions in the full fee. There are a couple of legal cases that the city attorney had mentioned in the stack report that were analyzed in the letter that we sent, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it or not, and those cases primarily the city of San Jose from 2015, and the city of West Hollywood from 2016. These both, if you read those cases, they relate specifically to residential developments and inclusionary affordable housing in residential projects. There are no cases addressing non-residential projects like this one that produce employees and have a impact fee related to them. They are very distinguishable, and the, your own ordinance as adopted includes the reduction program to ensure that the fee as assessed is, bears a relationship to the project. So while I think that Brian can speak to his comfort with the, the staff's recommendation, which I think he is comfortable with, even though it is higher, but using 11 employees rather than three, the full amount of the fee would not be legally supportable. And the only other thing I will mention, actually, one thing to mention briefly is the city of San Jose itself, which is the subject of that 2015 case in September, adopted a commercial linkage fee for affordable housing, and it is a nexus-based study, it's a mitigation fee act-based fee, and it exempts storage because of its incredibly low employee ratios. So the only other thing I'll mention is, it was a surprise to us tonight that the item that was being presented is a new item rather than a continuation of the original appeal. You have a policy which relates to a tie vote by your council when you have a member present, but that needs to abstain, and it changes your vote and sort of what the outcome of your vote might be. It is material to the project, so we would ask that you continue the discussion you started earlier and make a decision about how this project should be decided on. We have always assumed this was an appeal, so we were surprised this evening, but that was changed in nature. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mayor, Mayor Brown, if I could, if I could just make one brief comment, and I, I don't have anything additional to add on the affordable housing fee, but on the first, on the first page of the staff report, we do point out that this is being brought to the council under the council review provisions of section 18144010. So this was clearly stated in the first page of the staff report on what the city was doing with this.
Excellent, thank you.
Long comment I have.
I appreciate that clarification. Let's go through, I'll call your name, and then maybe ask some questions of the applicant, and then we'll get back to the public hearing. So council member Arkin, do you have any questions for the applicant as presented or anything that was not presented?
No, I, you know what, I don't think so, not at this time.
Thank you. Council member Testa?
Um, while Mayor Brown, you said, you already acknowledged that probably all of us have met with the applicant. I do want to, for the record, state that I did meet with the applicant twice and had a couple phone conversations, more than a couple if you count the pocket dial, I think, but, um, and so I've really had an opportunity to ask an awful lot of questions. I feel that those were good conversations, and I, I don't feel I need to ask any further right now, thank you.
Thank you. And vice versa, Narum?
Yeah, I do, is, there's somebody here or on the Zoom from, was it Where, Where and Malcolm, the architect?
Yes.
Karik is on.
Okay, so my question for him, I believe it's a him, is on the three-story building, before the pitched roof was added, it looks like, according to the drawings, the height was 35 feet, and the pitched roof was taken right up to 40 feet to stay within the design guidelines and not require a variance. And my question for you is, if that 40 feet limitation was not there, would you take that roof pitch up higher for a better design or a better appearance on the three-story building?
Well, first of all, good evening, Mayor, and council and staff. Yeah, my name is Karik, I'm with Where Malcolm Architects here in Pleasanton. And to answer your question, as you know, we took a whole new direction of the aesthetic, which was to match the, what we, what we were termed, to put it to a vernacular, was either a arts and crafts craftsman or an agrarian type architecture style. And if you follow that vocabulary, that architectural vocabulary, tense your question, no, typically the roof slopes that you would do in those forms is within what we have here, which is a 10 and 12, that's the rise over the run or the pitch of the roof for architect speak. So 10 and 12 is typically at the top of the, of the range, it can go as shallow as four and 10, again, for the specific vernacular that we were trying to mimic and, and be complimentary to the, to the adjacent development. So, no, it wasn't necessarily trying to fit it within the maximum, it was literally, that's what the architecture wanted. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Because it looked to me like it was something, it looks to me something that was just kind of plopped on the top of the building to fit within the 40 feet, and that's why I was wondering, I'm not an architect, I'm an engineer, but the proportions just didn't quite look right, and so that's why I was wondering if the 40 feet was a constraint that if removed, you would, you know, you would do something different or look a little different.
Not necessarily, like I said, because following though that particular architectural vernacular, we are within the typical roof slopes, and my designer and I, we talked about it, it was also those opportunities where, where there might have been like a massing, it felt like it was a bit of a pop out, so it was kind of looking like a corner tower. So the roof forms wanted to be there to, to really strengthen the corners. Corners on buildings are very important, lots of things going there in theory, but no, to answer your question, it, it wasn't just like, take it right up and whatever we ended up with, we kind of looked at it, and again, the arts and crafts eventually led to the Prairie style, and all that wanted typically to have a more shallow roof form and more of a broader, led to porches and, and roof form. So, no, we thought about that proportion, and, and again, given, especially on the three-story, we thought it was appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Karik, there was an earlier question whether or not the redesign changed the parapet height at all, could you answer that?
I have to go back and drill into that, but no, Mike and I did not, did not purposely go and change that, knowing that we already have figured out all the three-story and all the architecture over the previous two years, as Brian had mentioned.
Okay, that, that was my understanding. Honorable Mayor, can I address a couple of questions that were asked during the presentation that haven't been answered?
Well, if you could wait for me to ask my questions, then you can go next, Pat. When you and I talked, we, you showed me the red trees, and anybody from, from a public storage can answer this, you showed me the red trees, and we discussed how they're shielding the building, however, they're deciduous trees, at least that was our understanding at the time, and that you led me to believe that they would be changed to evergreen trees, so they would be able to be masking the building 12 months of the year. Can you comment on that?
That is correct. I, I led you to believe it because that is what we've done, and actually, the change happened between the planning commission workshop and the actual planning commission meeting. So those were changed because when we were looking to how, how do we screen the building the best we could, we realized they were deciduous, and so those were changed to evergreen, and that the last sheet, sheet L3 in your package would show that those are all now evergreen. The issue was, we had these renderings done already, and they had the, the red tree, so that's why you still see the red on the renderings.
Okay, because the red trees look really pretty fun, of course. We're going to have leaf drop. And then it's, could you or somebody from your group comment about the purpose of the flat top design, it came out of, of kind of a surprise, I guess, we had the pitched roof, and then at the very last minute, architecture came up with a style that was more of a flat top with a crown molding on the rim. I wondered where that came from and what the purpose was.
In discussions, there were, there was questions of, because it increased the height, what, what would it look like without the roof? So that, that's all it was, it was just showing that as an alternative if council chose to go that direction.
Okay. And if I could just make a, this is our question period, so Kar, right, Brian, excuse me, Brian, I did get a chance to view the, the chronology of the project, and three years sounds like an incredibly long time, but your, your image is very small on the screen for anybody watching at home, and when I had a chance to read it up close, there was a period of time, 11 months, where we were waiting for public storage to come back, and then there was another big gap. So I, I want to, I want you to be fair in your comments, that it isn't all the city's responsibility for three years, that much of this time, perhaps even a big chunk, if not half of it, was also public storage working on the project. Could you comment on that?
Oh, I absolutely acknowledge that. And my comment wasn't that the city created a long period of time, I was, I was stating that we've had a lot of back and forth.
Okay.
And that's, the long, the long list of items, the back and forth. Now, certainly, a public storage, we would have had sometimes, we actually changed architectural firms, so we got Where Malcolm involved, we've done a couple of other things. We had transitions internally, that, that caused some of that delay, so I'm not, I'm not suggesting by any means that we don't, we don't bear a significant portion of responsibility, the, the fact is, it's been a long time.
I appreciate that, because we were getting emails and letters that three years is an unreasonable amount of time for the city to be working on this project, and it, and some residents wrote letters as if it was 90% our fault, so responsibility. So I appreciate you clarifying that we both had some responsibility in this. And then, Brian, one last question, the $25 per foot rentable space is used for some of the, the land valuation, is $25 per square foot in Pleasanton with a brand new building and conditioned, so heated and air-conditioned spaces, is $25 what you expect to rent these, these facilities on it?
Not according to our pricing department. We, we have full detailed analysis prepared by them, and they scrape rates from, not only, of course, our own properties, but can, properties from around the country. We also have two sources, Radius Plus and Yardi, which are third-party aggregators, and they scrape data as well. So what happens is, your ground floor space, whether it's conditioned or not conditioned, is your most valuable space. As you go upstairs, you actually have a discount to that, to that space, whether or not you are conditioned. Now, conditioned, of course, is a benefit, it's probably, you know, depending on the marketplace, it could be as much as a 10% positive in, in that, in that rent, but once you go upstairs, that sort of goes away. The upstairs really is just more square footage, not more valuable square footage. Believe it or not, it, it's completely underutilized real estate when you have a bunch of garage doors sitting next to each other, which is why we look to redevelop these, these locations, but they are extremely valuable and extremely sought after, and, and through time, they're going away more and more as, as, as sites are redeveloped. So as far as the rental rate goes, it could be plus or minus 25 bucks. What's not factored in there is, in, you know, the EPS analysis is, is very simplistic, let's say, doesn't, doesn't have bad debt in there, it doesn't have giveaways to, to entice people to move in, it doesn't have a lot of other expenses, but 25 could be give or take, and that changes the seasonality. COVID recently, occupancy went up, rates fell through the roof, or fell through the floor. People needed the space. Yeah, 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 so, so we have, we have more, more, more tenants, but we have lower rates, and we're, we've seen that all around the country. So it changes through seasonality during the winter months, our rates are much lower than the summer months, as people move in versus move out, and it changes over time.
Okay. I think we're all done with asking applicants. Any last closing statements? You will have a chance to rebut, so let's get through the public feedback, we have some speakers, and then if the applicant has another comment before we close the public hearing, then we're absolutely ready to listen. then we're absolutely ready to listen. So, Madam Clerk, do we have anybody that would like to speak on this item?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Brad Hurst, followed by Mithrae.
Still muted. Am I?
Good evening, Mr. Hurst. You are not muted.
I'm not muted. Well, thank you. First of all, I would like to echo some thoughts expressed earlier this evening, thanking Jerry Thorne and Jerry Penton for their many years of service. And as one of the speakers noted, over the past 25 years and during their tenure, there have been a great many improvements to the community of Pleasanton. I'd also like to congratulate you, Carla, and Valerie and Jack Balch on their election victories. The application before you tonight is public storage, which, as you pointed out, has gone on for a very long time. And there are a lot of reasons for that. Nevertheless, you have a very thorough staff report, a very thorough analysis, a four-to-one recommendation for approval by the planning commission with some modifications by the applicant, which frankly, I think everybody would agree, improve it. They, in addition to the normal property improvements, they're providing $320,000 in cash, cash for trail maintenance and trail construction. They have gone a long ways out of their way to create a viable and desirable project. Now, the people that are always forgotten in all of these discussions are the customers and the residents. The only reason to increase the storage capacity is because there's customer demand for it. The improved aesthetics of it will benefit the residents. And it's always amazing that how city staff and commissions and councils forget the benefits to customers and residents. And I'd like you to take that into consideration. However, what I'd really like to speak on tonight is the overriding large issue. What the council is doing tonight is creating a huge, enormous black cloud over encouraging investment in this community. It'd be very difficult for larger projects than, you know, this is what, two and a half acres, for larger projects to come in and be faced with residual land value extortions in excess of $1 million. What are you going to do when 10x genomics comes in with a 14-acre project? How many mega millions are you going to expect from them? What are you going to do if Stanford Valley Care Hospital, which has plenty of room for expansion, comes in and wants to increase? Are you going to require mega millions? And don't forget, the more you extort, the higher the cost to the forgotten person, the customer. So I see that my time is up, and I'd just like to leave you with one thought. 50% of nothing is nothing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. And our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Mithrae, followed by Devang Adyaru.
Hi, my name is Mithrae. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. I reside in Herby Ranch, right next door to Public Storage. And I'd like to, as for the item under discussion here, I'd like to raise a few important points about it as a next-door resident to this business. So firstly, there is no buffering between Herby houses and the one-story units that currently are, are, you know, there. There's a lot of light that is visible in the nighttime, and I expect this to increase when it becomes a three-story construction down the line. Second of all, like, there were points that was discussed about vehicular traffic and pollution and noise pollution. One thing to note is that the south of Nevada Street is home to a lot of wildlife and animals. And I am afraid that having vehicular traffic would have a detrimental impact on the wildlife in that area. And then finally, the three-story construction, which is nearly 40 feet tall, actually changes significantly the skyline as seen from some of the houses. I believe all of these will have a great impact in reducing the property values as well as the experience for residents here, including for the children who, it might be, it might be, you know, a negative effect of having vehicular traffic when children are playing in the neighborhood. So with these remarks, I'd like to conclude. And thank you for the opportunity to speak here.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Devang Adyaru, followed by Pavan Gadam.
Good evening, Mayor Brown and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Devang Adyaru. I've been living in this beautiful city with my wife and two kids for last 18 months. I'm a resident and a property owner of a house on Houston Street, situated adjacent to the public storage complex along the western border of the complex. I'm speaking to express my opposition to this proposal. Here are the main points that I wanted to express. First is the three-story structure will be only about 200 feet away from our house. And there will be increased noise and vehicle pollution hazard because of the increased capacity of the facility. The second point is the lack of privacy. I'm concerned that because of the height and increased traffic, our backyard and patio will be visible from the, from the facility. And third point is the three-story structure will be, will block air, light, and unobstructed view from our house. The visual effect of the three-story structure will be very significant, I believe. It really breaks my heart that the beautiful view of mountains and faraway trees will be replaced with the structure. And it was one of the, one of the reasons we moved here was the view. So, yeah. Fourth point is, I'm also concerned about the construction noise from the proposed modifications during the daytime and the nighttime, of course. So, now, with that, I'll conclude and yield my time. Thanks.
Devang, will you please stay on? If you're still on, I wonder if staff could comment about construction windows of time that are allowable for construction and a noise or dust mitigation that would be taking place? Alan or Megan?
Yeah, I can hop on. I'm looking at the conditions of approval right now so I can get you the exact timeframe here. I know that we have a special condition of approval to limit the days that would normally be allowed. Give me just a second so I can find that. So we have a condition 22, really starting at 22, talks about construction practices and noticing. But 22 details about the work hours. So it says that work hours can take place between 8:00 and 5:00, 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, no construction on holidays, Saturdays and Sundays, which is more strict than the normal requirements. And we added that as a project-specific condition due to its proximity to the neighboring residences. And then there's the conditions that follow, talk about construction parking and management and noise and things of that nature.
And these would be on the other side of the single-story building. So that'd be a little distant, not right.
Correct.
At least.
Correct. And I'll let Alan add if I missed anything there.
No, I think that covers it. The conditions of approval are pretty strict as it comes to construction with the intent of Megan suggested of minimizing impacts to those neighboring residences.
So Devang, what I hear is they're going to do everything they can to minimize the impacts of construction. If for any reason that's a problem, would you contact the city and we'll work on it? You can contact me directly if you wish.
I'll sure do. Thank you.
Mayor Brown, can I ask for clarification on some of the speaker's questions also? Thank you. The blocking of light was a question that I had asked about because I was concerned if they were going to lose light. I know that the third-story building was set back as far away from the homes as possible. Will those properties, will their light be, will they be in shadow because of this new building? That's one of them. And the other question that I think is a really good one that I didn't think to ask is, will there be more light, nighttime light pollution because of this? Will, that will impact those homes? I think that's a really good question that I don't know the answer to.
So I can respond regarding the shadowing, the look that we took at it is the building gets set back far enough that it should not result in significant shadowing impacts to these adjacent properties. There's a very considerable distance in there. With respect to the lighting, there's a condition that requires supplemental lighting plan that also requires all lighting to be down-directed so it doesn't spill out into adjacent properties. And as Megan noticed during her presentation, all of the windows of the buildings will be opaque glass. So there should not be any light spilling out of windows at nighttime to disturb these residents. So between those measures, the operating hours of the site, which are, which are limited, as noted in the operations description for the project, we do not believe that light will be an issue for this, for this project.
Okay, I think that's important. Thank you. I hope that we will, again, that was Mithrae, I hope I got that right. If in fact, that is problematic, again, let the city know. Contact us.
Yeah, that was Devang.
No, no, the question about the light was actually the first speaker, but yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Pavan Gadam, followed by Venkat Warren.
Good evening, Pavan.
Hey, good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Certainly can.
Thank you. Thank you so much. First of all, congratulations to Mayor Brown and council member Arkin and council member Balch. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk today. I work at a local company, Roche Molecular Systems, and I moved in to Pleasanton about an year ago. And I bought a home in Pleasanton, again, in the same new community at Herby Ranch about an year ago. So the whole community is around like 87 families here and also plus 31, you know, people with special needs here. So I was enjoying my home all the one year, except my two kids. You know, it's a beautiful place to live in. And I particularly love my backyard. What is that panoramic view of the whole valley? It's awesome. So, you know, it's good until I got this notice last week that, you know, we are going to demolish the public storage and, you know, we are going to construct the three-floor building. That's a, that's a good devastating thing. It's a devastating thing. So I have a few points actually noted down. I, you know, Mithrae and Devang also mostly brought up my points, whatever I have wrote down myself also. It is about noise and pollution. It's about the privacy. It's about the, you know, especially for me, view of it. It's, you know, I wish I would invite you all to my home and just to see the valley. But again, the commercial traffic. So, see, because of this COVID situation and, you know, kids are at home. So if you see in the evening, there are like 15 to 20 kids playing outside. And if we increase, there are no barricades or, you know, to block kids, basically. So there is, you know, cars coming and going. It's pretty dangerous here. And, you know, we talked about the wildlife. We talked about the value of the house. So there are, you know, people with special needs. I don't know what is the impact on them. And actually, we have, you know, a few incidents of squatters. Actually, I am not sure whether this will increase that. We had an incident actually like yesterday. And, you know, we talked about this flashlight, flashy, you know, lights at night. In fact, I see 100 lights every night, 100 lights. I switch them off now. I don't know. It would become 150 or. So that's, that's no problem. And we talked about solar panels, actually. I don't know where we are going to install them because they are, again, flashy more, you know, with the sunlight and all. I don't know how, you know, we have like a two-story and three-story, like we share the wall, basically. We have two-story and three-story. So how, how it's going to be, I don't know. So, yeah, that's all I want to talk. Thank you for giving me the opportunity and thanks for your time.
Before, before you go, you know, they said the solar panels are going to be on the roof and that parapet they're referring to is that decorative edge that's around the building that should shield the visual from the solar panels. You mentioned many things which were discussed earlier. I really appreciate you calling in, and I think we're trying to do everything we can to take those into consideration.
Thank you so much, Mayor Brown.
Clerk, do you have another speaker? How many more speakers do we have, just so I know?
We have five more speakers.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Venkat Warren, followed by Steve Van Dorn.
Mayor Brown, I don't see Venkat in the room.
All right, thank you. Mr. Van Dorn, please.
Good evening, Mayor Brown. City council members, once again, congratulations on your new role as mayor and welcome, Councilmember Arkin. And I can't see Jack, so hopefully he's able to listen in. I'm here this evening, but before I do that, I want to just introduce myself. Steve Van Dorn, President and CEO of the Pleasant Chamber of Commerce. And we represent over 730 businesses and nonprofit organizations throughout the Tri-Valley. I'm here with you tonight to request you uphold the planning commission's approval of the public storage project and approve the reduction of the affordable housing fee that is being proposed by the applicant. I also want to share the chamber's concerns with what has transpired for this project to this point. Our first concern is timing. And this has already been mentioned, and I understand the applicant is partly responsible for this. But the approval process has taken over three years to get to the city council for approval. Even when you take into account the impact of COVID, this is not reasonable when you consider it only took Hacienda Business Parks approval process two years to be approved with far more controversy and challenges. We can do better. We also don't believe the integrity of the city's development process has been upheld. The planning commission request, the planning commission's approval was based on the applicant making significant changes that were requested of them, meeting all the zoning requirements and had all the support of the city staff. An August workshop was held with the opposition and full support of the planning commission. And you can understand why. This project is improving the street scene and walking safely along Nevada Street is also being improved, adding new attractive buildings and many other important things equating to over $300,000 in investments. Then, then we move to the November city council meeting when Councilmember Tessa appealed the project. Shortly after this meeting, she requested that public storage remove all the orange branding and suggested the architecture be revised so it blends into Herby Ranch and Sunflower Hill. Even though we can agree that the new architecture looks great, is that the appropriate process? Shouldn't those types of requests be made in a public forum? So we're concerned about that. We now have a completely different project than what was approved by the planning commission and supported by staff based on input from one city council member. Based on what I have just outlined, why would anyone want to serve on our planning commission when all their hard work is thrown out the window by our council member that is not even discussed in an open forum? We can do better. Lastly, we believe the reduction of the affordable housing fee is a reasonable request since it reflects the actual employee score of foot ratio of the project. Public storage will only have three employees working on the project site. They're also providing a manager's unit in the project, which will essentially be an affordable an affordable unit, so they should not pay any additional fee, but have agreed to do some, and have talked to the city about, about that. In closing, this is a great project for Pleasanton. The chamber respectfully asks that you uphold the Planning Commission approval that was presented at your November seventeenth meeting and the approval of the rejection and the affordable housing fee. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. And our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Nancy Allen, followed by Herb Ritter.
Hello there.
Yes.
Congratulations to Mayor Brown and Councilmembers Arkin and Balch. Tonight, I'm speaking just for myself. As you know, I was the lone vote of no on this project. The reason I voted no was regarding the building design, especially the bright orange colors, which were inconsistent with our general plan. In addition, the, I didn't feel the design was consistent with our design guidelines in terms of compatibility with the neighboring housing areas. I want to say that I fully support the new design. A big thank you to Councilmember Tessa, to public storage and to staff for working together to enhance the building design. You've created a design our community can be proud of. It is also now consistent with our general plan and compatible with neighboring properties. As to the amenity required for this upzone, I do support the Planning Commission's approval of a trail at a value of three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. I had hoped that the value analysis we did would justify a larger amenity, but it, based on the data that exists, it does not. I also think that, but I do want to say that I think the process of creating a formal and objective third-party value analysis to try to tackle the question of what is the right value on large projects makes sense strategically. A number of other cities have done it, and I think we should still try to tackle it. But it's not something we should tackle project by project. I, I think it needs to be brought to a public forum. We need to come up with some different approaches that we, as a city, can use. Because as a planning commissioner, we struggle with this on every single project. What's the right relative value of an amenity? Is it a bathroom? Is it a, you know, what is, what is it? And I, I think it will help developers and the community to understand the fair, the fair share. I, you know, Bradhurst mentioned that it's extortion. I actually think it's good business. When, when a city gives up zoning and upzones, and we're only talking upzoning, I think, I, I think as many cities do, that that value needs to be shared so that the community can benefit as well as the developer. So, so I hope we do take a next step based on some of the learnings we had today. As to the housing fees, I just had one question, and that is if, if on a project, because I understand the direction, if on a project that it has lower employees, we reduce the fee, my question is, if we have a project that has higher-than-average number of employees, will we increase the fee? Therefore, hopefully ending up by not have, by having both ups and downs and being able to preserve our low-cost housing fund. Thanks very much.
Yeah, I'm going to ask the city manager a question about that. So in this case, we have a significant reduction in employees per square foot. Is a reverse done if we have a high-density population of, of, whether it's workers or manufacturing or production? Is it also done as an adjustment in the upside?
In regards to, if I think I understand the question or the suggestion is, as it relates to this particular site, and if our, our impact fees are typically calculated based on the increment of new square footage. So as, as property owners come in and add on, whether it's residential, commercial, or office or industrial, that, that increment is captured for all of our impact fees. Do we go in the reverse when the use converts to something else and doesn't involve the addition of, of square footage? And the answer to that in regards to the affordable housing fee is no. But that's not the case in other areas, like the traffic impact fee, where we might look at the use to determine whether it's more intensive, generates more trip generation than the previous use, and then we capture the additional increment. So there are some exceptions, but in regards to the housing fee, that's not the case. That's not how it's structured. That's not typically how it's structured in other communities as well.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Herb Ritter, followed by Naren Drinad Bandalapati.
Hello, council members.
How's it happening?
There. Okay. Good to, good to talk to you again. My name's Herb Ritter, thirty-year Pleasanton resident, and I'm currently the Chair of the Planning Commission, past Chair of the Pleasanton Chamber of Commerce. However, I'm speaking as a private citizen and not representing the Commission nor the chamber. I am concerned about the process the city has taken with regards to business projects based on the latest staff report for this project that has been in the works before, between two to three years. The applicant has been working with the staff and had a workshop with the Planning Commission to gather community and commissioner input. Frankly, these workshops are very helpful for all of us. We came back to the Planning Commission meeting and reviewed what the applicant and staff thought made a good project, and we had a community input. We tweaked it some and ended up with a four-one vote. The standing vote mostly concerned about the franchise color and, but said, as Commissioner Allen said, she thought it was a good project. Once it was pulled from the council's agenda on the first, deeper review sounds like staff outsourced the, outsourced it to an outside consultant for plan check review, and it came back to council with math errors appeared to be completely a different project. How much did the city spend on outsourcing consultant? Was the consultant from Pleasanton? They, they should be, if you want to get the Pleasanton style. I hear staff is doing outsourcing a lot lately, what I, which I don't think is good for our community or our applicants. The city appears to be discouraging businesses from working in our town. Maybe it's a California thing. This is not good when over fifty-five percent of our revenue comes from the businesses that pays for police, fire, and parks, comes from business taxes. With regard to the project, I support the Planning Commission and staff's original recommendation, as noted, the council item on December first meeting, and would support any minor tweaks from the council's input. This proposal was accumulation of between two to three years of the applicant and staff work while supporting the deed-in right-of-way so we could develop the Erby Sunflower Hill Ranch. That, that was all part of the process. In these very difficult times, I'm hoping staff and our new council will make an effort to be business-friendly to applicants as they try to help better our community with services and needs to keep Pleasanton a great place to be. I believe public storage proposal to upgrade the lot and support the requests of them during the development of the Sunflower Hill project was a huge community benefit. We just can't keep moving the goalposts. In the future, if council wants to weigh in on large projects, I would encourage a joint Planning Commission and council workshop out of courtesy to the applicant. I hope you'll consider my thoughts for this project and others' projects as they come up in the new year, and I'm looking forward to continuing our service, and thank you for all of yours and our city of Pleasanton.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Naren Drinad Bandalapati.
Good evening.
Hello. Hi, congratulations, Miss Mayor Brown and other council members. Thanks for the opportunity. So actually, most of my neighbors already talked about the issues that we, that we are going to talk about. Here, actually, I bought a house last year in November. So before buying this house, I was talking with multiple people and then I heard about the Pleasanton City because I never visited Pleasanton City here, here, before last year. Then I came to know that this is the one of the safest to play cities in the Bay Area, and it is, after coming here and then looking at this property, and then I, this property, and so even though the budget is a little bit more for me, I bought a house here. And right now, after seeing recently, like, notice from you, I, we, I think I'm just a few scary things I'm facing. One thing is the property value. I'm just wondering whether the property will impact many property value or not. And one more thing is regarding the squatters. Recently, we see a couple of squatters movement here, and then we see some of the videos also, and we are seeing they're almost about to break the doors and going to enter some of the houses. So that a little bit scary for us. And after adding this storing houses, there may be a more chance of squatters movement Sunday as well as a more traffic across the Nevada Street because most of the kids are who are playing close to the Nevada Street. There is a park over there. Yeah, I think these are some of the issues, and because other issues already my neighbors already talked about. Thank you.
Thank you. And for you and any of your neighbors, if you see squatters in your community, please, I had to look it up, but please dial the nine-three-one-five-one-zero-zero. It is the non-emergency police number because we do not want to encourage that from occurring.
Mayor, Mayor Brown, there is someone who submitted a speaker card who did not get called. Could we ask if Jocelyn Combs is in the room and if her speaker card was received?
Clerk, do we have anyone else in the speaker?
To speak?
We did not receive a speaker card today for Jocelyn Combs. Alan, is she in the room?
I do see a Jocelyn C. in the room.
Could we allow her to speak, please?
Thank you so much. I happen to know that Julie checks her cell phone, so I texted her to find out what happened. I put it in the day that I got the agenda, so it's probably been a while, but thank you for letting me speak. Congratulations to Mayor Brown and Councilmembers Arkin and Balch, and my condolences to him on the loss of his grandmother. So these comments are about the affordable housing fee. I'm in the process of planning an accessory dwelling unit on my property. Fortunately, I have the room to do that. So as an older resident, I'm looking to downsize as well as age and place, so hopefully this ADU will allow my daughter and her family to return to Pleasanton from Livermore. And so that's the view that I had in looking at the affordable housing fee. So at first glance, the two-million-dollar affordable housing fee for this project does seem to be exorbitant. But if you compare it to my, I, let's compare it to my ADU. All told, my four-hundred-square-foot detached cottage will cost about two-hundred thousand dollars. Yikes, right? Sticker shock. But yet, for the two-million-plus fee, the city could hypothetically, hypothetically build eight, eleven units like mine. That's a reasonable trade-off when you consider how many more housing units this storage facility will provide storage space for. And I think there could be a nexus there somewhere. So the project instead is asking that the fees be reduced by ninety-eight point eight percent to twenty-six thousand. That's the cost of city fees, permits, and my design. In the, in the affordable housing business, that's almost nothing. Minuscule and really kind of insulting. And if approved, would set a terrible precedent for any new industrial facilities hoping to build or expand here for us for affordable housing. Even the sanddag option of sixty-eight thousand dollars will recover the cost of one-third of an ADU. In the past, we've negotiated seventy-six or seventy-five percent reductions in the affordable housing fee for two other storage facilities, which would come to five-hundred-and-six thousand dollars or just over two ADUs like mine for this project. I believe it's a reasonable compromise. We could hypothetically house two of the five employees for the storage facility who might in fact need affordable housing in order to live in Pleasanton. It follows precedent and would at least make a dent in the affordable housing needs of our city. So please support option two. Thank you.
Thank you, Jocelyn. I believe that's the last speaker. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. With that, I will close, I will retain the public hearing open for just a little bit longer. If Mr. Castanza or somebody from public storage would like to rebut anything that they heard from the public or any closing comments.
Can you hear me?
You can. You bet.
Appreciate it. Just a couple of things. There were a lot of calls, and I think, I think some of this stuff was covered. With regard to the neighbors and traffic, the incremental traffic is, is fairly minimal in this. There was a traffic report for that as well. From a lighting perspective, all of the existing buildings are lit every so many feet, and so the new building wouldn't be any different than that. Just want to clear that up. With regard to the affordable housing fee, I wanted to clarify, I think Tamsin mentioned that we would be supportive of the sanddag analysis, even though there, there isn't a direct correlation and/or nexus to the number of employees. So I think there might have been some confusion in what I said on that point, so I wanted to clear that up. Otherwise, appreciate the time, and I think Tamsin was going to, was going to talk about the appeal piece as well. Pat, I don't know if you had to say anything.
Yeah.
So this is, oh, go, go ahead, go ahead, Pat. Sorry, we're talking over each other. You go ahead.
I'm sorry. Mine's simple on, on the landscaping that Councilman, Councilwoman Tessa discussed on the adjoining neighbors. Those houses that back up, they all have rear yards. They were not landscaped by the builder, but they are being landscaped by the individual owners, and those applications go in. So they have the ability to, to screen that area. And as pointed out by staff, for public storage to come in and put landscaping in there, that's just not a choice because of the circulation pattern for fire and obviously where the building's right at the property line, there's no room for it. But the other areas where it might appear there's room, that's circulation for fire. That's it for me.
Great. Thanks, Pat. This is Tamsin Plume with Holland and Knight. Again, very briefly, I just wanted to mention two things. One, I appreciate the city attorney pointing out section eighteen-one-four-four-zero-one-zero, which does allow for city council review. But I just want to note that this is under the heading of the appeals chapter of the code, and it relates very directly to your resolution eighty-nine dash three-six-one, which addresses voting and what happens in the instance of a tie where you have a council member recused, and there's a separate provision for appeals, matters on appeal versus matters of initial review by the council. And so I was just curious if the city attorney could address that point because I do think this still is in the nature of an appeal, even though it is a city council review item presented differently than a straight-up appeal. So would the city attorney address that possibly, or I'm happy to discuss with him offline if that's helpful?
Yeah. Yeah, I have reviewed the, the council review provisions of the code, and like the staff report points out, that's what we're relying on this case. I don't really have anything to add to the, the advice I provided earlier in the meeting as far as the procedures that, that apply to that sort of review. So I really don't have any further comments on that issue.
Thank you. All right, with that, excuse me, with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council, and let's hope we don't have a tie and that we can make a decision with, with our council. Since Councilmember Tessa was the one who brought it up for review to the city council from the Planning Commission, I wondered if you would like to make comments and hopefully a motion. This is bifurcated, so we have two decisions. A and B, I will make the decision that those will be separate votes. So we are first discussing item A, which is the project itself, as well as the Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and I was making the assumption that it meets those. So, Councilmember Tessa?
Fantastic. Thank you. So I, I did forget that I had a question.
So I did forget that I had a question for the applicant that maybe Pat can answer.
Oh, oh, we have closed the public hearing. Is it critical? Can you ask staff, please?
I can add. Well, let's see. Let's see, there was the on the office, the pillars. Is it possible to have those pillars painted the trim color? It was a discussion that informal discussion with the applicant. And they said that that would be quite doable. And so I'd like to just confirm that that would be included in the modifications. There you go. Have those pillars painted the color of the trim of that so that they're not standing out as much. So and the other thing on that picture, or is that really grass in front of that office? Is there grass in the landscape? I would be surprised if there's maybe turf.
Sure, I think that that area actually includes more extensive planting than we're seeing here. That that's one of the more landscaped areas. So I think that's just for the display of the image. And then in terms of the posts being painted, I saw a thumbs up from the applicant, and that can be added as a condition of approval to the project if the council goes that direction.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you for getting that. So I, I, I want to say, because my name's come up a lot in this, and understandably, yes, I did. I, the, the concern about that this is in the 11th hour, in fact, after the 11th hour, that I requested a city council review of the project. It is first, you know, we're handed this at this point of the project. And we haven't had an opportunity to give input. And so I think that is something that we need to discuss. It's something that myself and I think others have been talking about for a while, that there should be an opportunity for council input at an earlier stage of a project. But this one, there was none. And, you know, I have to say, I'm, I'm very pleased with the changes that have happened and how rapidly it was done. And I am, I'm very appreciative of that because I do not believe this project a couple of weeks ago was what our community deserved, what our residents deserved. And I am so pleased that so many of the Irving Ranch residents came and spoke. And I think it's really important to understand. And, and I'm a little uncertain why. I know that most of them have been in town for only maybe 18 months, I think several of them said. But I don't understand, did they not get notices the previous workshops and Planning Commission meetings? But I'm really glad that they're here now because my concern was looking at the way the project was presented only a few weeks ago, that it didn't blend with our, that lovely new neighborhood. And I was concerned for our new residents there. And the project did not conform with our general plan. There is so much in the general plan about branding colors and fitting in with the neighborhood. And when you look across the street at another public storage project, I'm going to tell my story. I'll try and keep it brief. But 20 years ago, when that public storage project was being discussed, I was at the time focused on getting schools built. And so I wasn't really paying attention to projects like this. But I was hearing a lot of discussion about this project. And I knew quite a few people on the council at the time and Planning Commission at the time. And I remember thinking, gosh, aren't they making a big deal out of it's just a storage facility? So when that project got built and I drove by it the first time, I thought, wow. I am so glad that there were people that understood that it was important because that project across the street is lovely. And it doesn't just look like a storage facility, it blends in with the Reflections neighborhood that was right next to it. And so I really felt a responsibility to be that person now that says it isn't just a storage facility. It needs to blend. We've now added this new neighborhood. And in the general plan, there's so much requirement of this is a gateway. The Stanley should be, and that's why that other storage facility was done to the high level that it was, was because it was recognized as not only needing to blend with the residential next to it, but it was a gateway to our community. So I am so pleased at the changes that have happened on this project. I'm very appreciative of the applicant, the efforts that have been made. So I think that we do need to have conversation going forward that will, I think, benefit everyone in future. I think it, we need to have a conversation. I think Herb suggested that there be a workshop. I think I would like to have a workshop with the Planning Commission and have some discussion. But I will say, I watched the Planning Commission meeting to try and understand why this project came forward that did not conform with our general plan. And what concerned me was at that last meeting, there was only one planning commissioner who brought forward the information that there were concerns that the project wasn't conforming to the general plan. And I heard several other planning commissioners really share a lot of concern that they had made a decision without that information. So I think that there are important conversations that have to have to make sure that there is a clear understanding and that we're working toward the type of projects that our community has, over the decades, worked hard on that general plan. And it, it really does take into consideration. Someone I was talking about the forgotten resident. No, this is about the residents. It is about looking at every project and what does our community deserve? What do our residents deserve? And so with that, I'm, I'm very pleased with the changes. And I would like to make a motion. I would like to move on the first part of and ask that, make the motion that we find that the proposed project complies with the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, the guideline section 15183, and requires no further environmental analysis. I would also like to move that we adopt the draft resolution, Attachment 1, upholding the commission's approval with the modified and really wonderful modifications, the, the approved plans of case P 19 dash 0128 and P 19 dash 0129, subject to conditions of approval in Exhibit A of Attachment 1, including. I, I am concerned about the discussion of community benefit. And I agree with what Commissioner Allen was saying, that we need to also have that discussion going forward. But as uncomfortable as I am, I don't think that it's something that we can correct in with this project. So I would support staff recommendation that the community benefit as currently approved would be included in this recommendation or motion.
That's the 320,000.
That is the motion.
For the trail.
Right.
For the maintenance. Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Arkin, are you interested in a second on that motion?
I will second the motion.
Do you have any comments at this time?
Yes, I actually do. I have some comments. I do have a few questions. I just want to clarify. Can I ask staff those right now before the comments?
Of course.
Okay, I just want to, just briefly, the traffic study, since that came up with the residents speaking tonight, can you just briefly touch on what the traffic study indicated?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Megan maybe while I start if you have more of the data. But as, as the applicant suggested, a traffic study was done and found that relative to the, to the size of the project, very, very minimal traffic volumes, just based on the way that people tend to use storage facilities. It's not, it's not generate a high volume of traffic and certainly doesn't do it at peak times. So the relative volumes are quite low.
Okay, thank you. I think that's important for the community to hear. And also, and I, I'm, it's in the packet here of all massive paperwork, but the sizes of the trees that will be planted, I mean, you know, it's important to get those trees growing as quickly as possible to do that, that, that buffering. Can you, do you remember what the sizes, are they like 24 inch box trees that are planted or?
Do you know, Megan?
I'm pulling up the landscape plan now. I don't recall off the top of my head, but give me just a minute here. So it looks like 15 gallon for the trees are proposed.
Okay. And lastly, it was a in, in a lot of the community comments tonight, a buffer between Irving, Irving Ranch and Public Storage. I know the applicant had addressed that, that that's not something they think they're able to do. Is there any possibility of any buffer being done to help the residents with, with, with being right next to this, this, this business?
Based, based on the applicant's report back, it sounds like they don't believe that would be feasible. You know, I think we could certainly encourage them to look for ways that some landscaping could be added. But my sense of it is that that space is really quite constrained. So and at best, it would be intermittent plantings, just because of the way the buildings are positioned relative to the property line. So difficult to condition that I think to specifically require something that we don't know will necessarily be feasible.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then to my comments, I do want to say I'm very appreciative of the applicant working with the community and working with city staff to what I see is a significant improvement over the first rendering. Very happy to see the orange taken out. I, I think, you know, that was the one thing when I started looking at this, I thought, well, Irving Ranch is right next door. And it would be nice if, when I saw the first plan, if it would look more in tune with what Irving Ranch looks like. And yes, this is kind of an industrial area, but areas near it are transitioning to residential because of Irving Ranch and also the residential over next to the CVS Shopping Center over there. So it is, it is kind of transitioning that area a little bit. So I am very appreciative of the work that's been done. I, I think the, the roof pitch, I think, looks good, even though that does take it up in the height. I think the aesthetics of it make it look much better and more in tune with what Irving Ranch looks like. So I'm very happy with the design. So I just want to thank you all for doing that. Let me see, what else? The other thing I, I really, really great to see, the lead silver certification. I, that's one thing that I'm very pleased with seeing that done. So thank you for that. I think that, that has always been something very important to me with buildings. So I, I'm appreciative of that as well. And kind of piggybacking a little bit on what Councilmember Testa said about, you know, other storage facilities, the one across the street, but also the one that's on Valley Avenue. It's one that I pass quite frequently. And I always, when I look at it, I say, what a beautiful building. And it's, it's a storage facility, but it, it just, it really is a huge community benefit to have something look so nice and, and really match the area. So I think it's really important, and I'm glad the applicant was able to do that. So on the motion that Councilmember Testa presented, I'm very, I'm very supportive of that. So thanks for all the work on this.
Thank you. And one moment, Kathy. I just want to make sure, Julie, you included painting of the posts on the front of the building as a part of your motion. And you specified the color?
I, you know, I didn't put it in the motion, and I wasn't sure if I needed to because I thought that we had a staff. Should we add that to the emotion, to the motion?
It's just the will of the council to make the change. It should be added as a condition.
Okay. Do you want to me to make that, or do you want to make it as an amendment?
You're making the motion, so please make it as an amendment to your motion. And then if Councilmember Arkin wants to second with that modification.
Okay, absolutely. I, I, that is an important. And since the applicant is agreeable, please, I'd like to add the painting of the posts on the office to match the trim color of the building.
Thank you. And is that okay with you?
I'll second that, sure.
Terrific. All right. And then Vice Mayor Narum, would you like to have comments?
You're muted.
I'm going to be a little bit at odds here. I, you know, we heard the residents of Irving talk about the height of the three story building and blocking the views. And I am not seeing the benefit of the pitched roof adding that much to it, in particular, given the articulation, the cap around the edge of it. I, I would prefer to see the roof flat top. This isn't an industrial park. It, this building is 250 feet roughly away, excuse me, from the houses. You know, if we're concerned about light and air, I just, I don't see those caps or those, the pitched roof adding anything of significant value to the architecture, unlike the single story building there on Nevada where they put the pitched roof on it. With that, I think definitely adds value. So I would ask if you are willing to consider to take that off the three story building, in particular, in light of some of the comments from the residents next door.
I, if this wasn't 18 months to three years into the project, I would have, I would have thought that we really needed to talk more about the three stories, the third story. But that was an important aspect to the applicant. They were willing to do significant redesign to, to be able to not lose that third story. So that's what I would have wanted to modify, if we were going to modify. I think that the gabled roof is a substantial improvement on the aesthetics of those buildings, taking it from being industrial. And again, I don't, that's now a mixed use area. It's not industrial. And I don't want, it was those, those buildings looking stark, cold and industrial that I think was so, and the garish coloring. I think the way that it's designed now blends with, they work to make it blend with Irving Ranch. And I think that the gabled roofs are a really nice piece of the architecture that make that happen. So I wouldn't support that.
But that's, you know, that's a subjective opinion on my part and your part as well. And I would comment that the three story building is next to industrial buildings there on the other side. You know, it's, it's an industrial area. And, you know, I, I think we're being I think we're being um we're trying to make something into mixed use when it's industrial. And uh, so I'm, I'm concerned about that. I'm relieved to see that we're not going to try to impose uh more windfall or community benefits uh based on some uh subjective fee. You know, we don't have a prescribed fee schedule and to go back and do it, so I'm, I'm quite relieved about that. I, you know, it almost feels like, you know, we're trying to discourage investment in our community as opposed to trying to get investment. And Julie, you know, I'm making the comments, please. Um, and so I'm, I'm relieved to see that, and I think we need to be um sensitive to that. Uh, you know, we've got Oracle headed to Texas and a couple of other companies. I'd hate to see our businesses headed, you know, to another tri-valley city uh or out of state. So I hope we have a little bit of sensitivity to that. I do have some concern about the public process. Um, I feel like this design was done much without public input. You know, it's here now. I don't feel like I had an opportunity to um necessarily have input, nor uh some of the other council members. It just uh came and um I, I, I just, I'm not sure that this is good government. It doesn't feel transparent, quite frankly. I'm gonna leave it at that. I'm, I'm not gonna support this, um, because I, I think that we're trying to make something transitional that's up against, uh, we're trying to make this three-story building transitional that's up against industrial. On the other side of it, it's not up against housing. And um you know, I, I don't see housing being extended beyond Erby Ranch at this point. I asked the question of staff, and some of these lots and things, they're not big enough for high-density housing. And, and the owners haven't even um indicated an interest of, of potentially having housing. So I, I, I'm just, I'm not comfortable with it. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Well, I will support it. I, um, I've heard loud and clear from the residents, and some of them are three stories over in Erby Ranch, and they view easily over the fence into the two and three-story new construction we're talking about. They were concerned about sun setting over the buildings because they're so close and nearby. We do have the um the Vintage, which is right there on the corner at Stanley and Burnow slash Valleys slash First Street, and that's not uh far away. And as we look forward, I don't think farmers of the Erby Ranch would have thought they would be eighty-seven homes plus Sunflower Hill uh not even 20 years ago. So a lot of things have changed. Um, kind of a comment, uh, at least my opinion, is I did watch the planning commission uh video, and I heard the comments that some of the planning commissioners, if they knew the general plan comments about franchise colors and um that they may have made a different decision, but they felt, just as we heard tonight, this project has been in the queue for a long time. They were hesitant to go back to the drawing board and ask for too much. So they reluctantly supported the project. That was my understanding of, of the discussion. And I'd like to see planning commissioners and city council members have on their staff reports excerpts from that general plan. We read it, we understand it, but we certainly don't read it every single day. So those tools to help make these decisions, whether it's franchise colors, massing, um, or even the community benefits are all things that we do rely on staff to help us with, and I'd like to see more of that in the future. I, again, would like to thank the applicant for their flexibility on the building design, for their flexibility on franchise colors. The design of that lot is uh really the sign in that, in the um office up front and that keyhole, and it goes way to the back for the expansive um development. So all the orange colors um would be more towards the back, but as I discussed with Mr. Costanza, they would be visible from those two and three-story homes that are just adjacent to the property. So I, I feel good about the project. Uh, I would like to also have a little bit more of an open discussion about changes, and maybe we can do that more in the future. Um, but I do appreciate the applicant working on making a project that blended in with the housing uh adjacent, and that would be the Erby Ranch. So with that, if there's not any more comments, I'll ask the clerk to take a, a vote, a roll call vote on this item.
Sure. Councilmember Arkin?
Aye.
Narum?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously?
Um, not quite.
Oh, I'm sorry, with, um, with, I'm sorry, with Narum voting no, and um, Welch being abstained.
Poor Jack is hidden away for just one more item, and that is the second part of this, which is the housing and affordable fees. Uh, I'll go back to Councilmember Testa since we bifurcated. Would you like to uh make a discussion and I, or a motion on the housing fees?
Yes, thank you. And before I do, I, I would like to clarify, when um I asked that council um review this project, um I got a, a wake-up call the next morning from the applicant asking to meet, and I respectfully agreed to meet. I certainly wasn't planning to plan a project, but the applicant asked me what my concerns were, and I did share what my concerns were. And again, just being supportive and and trying to, you know, explain what, and um, I think that, I, I think that my, I think that there was an understanding that those concerns and given our community and the, the references in our general plan, and I think that's why there was a willingness to really work on that project. And, and I, I was very surprised at the ability to um do so so quickly, but I was appreciative. So um, on this one, um, I have great concerns about the affordable housing. Um, as staff shared with us, we are going to have some incredible demands in our community. And I just can't feel okay about um about not um doing everything that we can and, and um capturing the fees that we can. And our, our city attorney made it very clear that it is legally defensible to um retain um these fees. And so um, I really do believe that it's a um, an issue of um public concern and, in fact, a critical concern for our community, affordable housing. And that is the basis of um the collection of, let's see, public welfare was the term. Um, so I would like to make a motion to um to adopt affordable housing fee for P nineteen dash zero one two eight slash P nineteen dash zero one two nine, reflecting um staff's option number two. I think that that would be a um still far less than what we could um ask for and legally support. And I think it would be um a fair request. I, I would ask, again, while we all recognize to address further the community benefit at this stage of the game just really wasn't a realistic thing to do at this point. The language in the general plan makes it very clear that the floor area ratio, the FAR, um, when it exceeds the thirty-five, if, if the project was renovated and kept the single story, there would be um this, these additional fees wouldn't be considered, but there is clear language in the general plan that supports additional fees based on that additional um square footage and FAR. And it's been taken all the way to nearly a hundred percent. And I don't think that it's an excessive amount to um so I, I, my motion would support um option two.
And that's taking into consideration that they are building an onsite unit for their manager, and, and so the, so this would be five hundred and sixteen thousand in addition to that.
Right, but you know, I'm glad you pointed that out, because I think that it's important for everyone to know or remember that currently there is already a manager unit um in the property. So it isn't adding anything extra. And that certainly is not an affordable housing unit available to the community. Um, it is a part of the business, and the what is already built into the business currently, I don't think that that's a legitimate consideration for the affordable housing component. So yes, I, my motion would request that we um adopt the recommendation to, number two. And, and, and that's supported on the um the project's uh precedent that's been set in the past with other projects. So.
Brian, could I ask you to mute your microphone? You come in and out of the screen, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, um, any comments, Kathy?
Well, I'm not gonna support this motion either. I, I disagree. I, they're providing a unit for the manager, and I'm pretty darn confident that the manager's salary would not allow that person to go rent an apartment over at the Vintage or nearby. And while this unit is not designated as a BMR, the reality is, it is. It's, it's, it's providing a place to live for the manager and um you know, with the commute that doesn't involve putting a car on the road. So I, uh, if I had made the motion, I would have gone for option five. Um, but I cannot support option two. I think we're not, when we, when we go back and we look at the two that were approved in, what was it, ninety-seven and the early two thousands, I mean, we're comparing apples and oranges. There were different uh numbers in effect on how they calculated the employees. Can't support it.
Yeah, I have a hard time supporting it as well. I think a half million dollars for three or four employees is, is just very, um, very high. And it's pretty clear that even with eleven employees, which is the staff's recommendation for option five, it's still sixty-eight thousand. And there's such a gap in the middle between sixty-eight and five hundred and sixteen. There is no option that's like around a hundred or something like that, which, as Jocelyn Combs stated, even building an ADU in your backyard is two hundred thousand. But we do have a motion on the floor and seconded, so could the clerk take a vote?
Can I comment? Come, Mayor Brown? Um, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm a little mixed on this one. I understand um the rationale behind option two. But I also understand the rationale behind option five, and I think, Mayor Brown, your comments were well taken. There's nothing really in between. Um so I, I'm, I'm a little mixed. I, I think there should maybe be a happy medium and, and um I, I, I don't know.
Are you withdrawing your second?
Um, as I understood, do we go by Robert's rules? You can second and not vote in the affirmative.
You can do that, or you can withdraw your second?
Um.
We can take a vote?
She's right, though. She doesn't, she can second it, and she doesn't have to vote for it.
Absolutely. She can do both, so I'm just giving her the option.
Yeah, um, I, I won't withdraw it. I'll, I'll keep it.
Clerk, could you take a roll, please?
Councilmember Arkin?
I'll vote no.
Narum?
No.
Testa? You're muted, but that's a yes?
Yes.
Mayor Brown? No. All right, so with that, uh, the motion does not pass, so I'm looking for a second motion. Is there?
And I suggest that compromise where we look at an amount less than the five hundred thousand, but more than the sixty-eight. Could we say two hundred thousand? Can I, I'd like to make a motion where we um yeah.
Well, we could have a discussion before your motion if you prefer, but how do you feel about two hundred thousand? Kathy? Councilmember Narum?
I'd like to hear some rationale. I, I I'm not, I mean, that just sounds like you pulled a number out of a hat. And, you know, we're talking about three to five employees. One employee is being provided a house or a unit. Um, you know, that should play a role in this. And I, I don't, in my opinion, that needs to play a role in this. As I said, I, even though it's not a designated BMR, it is an affordable unit, and we don't have a whole lot of these. And um you know, they're, they're, we're talking three to four other employees. I, I, I think we need to have some kind of rationale to how we're gonna pick a number. And I, well, I would like to hear um a rationale before I'm gonna support just grabbing a number.
And, and I think I, the rationale supported the five hundred thousand, and it isn't, it um it isn't, it doesn't have to be tied to how many employees. This is a, a, a significant project. The, the affordable housing fees are um a matter of public concern, and it doesn't have to be tied to how many employees. It is, it is the again, the way the affordable housing laws are written, if it was and, and our attorney says that it's legally supportable.
We don't quite have a motion yet, though. Um, Kathy, do you want to make a motion?
Uh, not particularly, because I'll probably be on the short end. Well, I will, I will move um I'll move option five. I had originally come in thinking that, that the correct thing to do uh was to take option five and then have them pay four-tiffs of that, since they were paying, or they were providing the one unit, which um does not generate income. Um, but I, I'm sensing that's not gonna pass, so, I mean, I will move uh that option five for the sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars.
I'm gonna second and second that motion. I think um it, it's a difficult decision when you have such an unusual uh project that has so few employees. But I think it's only good, uh, good respectful government to say, we understand your situation, and and you are, you really are atypical for the nexus studies that we've been doing. And so I will do the unusual thing as mayor to step in and second that motion.
Yeah, I, you know, I agree with you. I mean, it's like I said earlier, I, there's the balance here of doing what's right and for the benefit of the community, but also encouraging the investment. And quite frankly, as residents, if the businesses flee, and, you know, we, we, we haven't, we're not serving the residents. I mean, there's nothing worse than a bunch of empty business buildings. And, you know, we can think about Main Street a little bit. I don't think anybody likes that. And so I think we need to, I think we just need to be very careful here.
So you have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion before we take a vote? Councilmember Arkin, how do you feel about that?
You know, I would prefer to see it a little bit higher than the 68. I mean, I don't think it has to go to the 200, although I don't think that's unreasonable. But I personally would want to support something a little bit more than that. I mean, I, I think the point is well taken with the amount of employees it generates and therefore there is rationale to decrease the affordable housing fees, which we are doing. We are doing by far, but there is the public benefit component as well and the need for the affordable housing. And Ms. Combs, who spoke earlier, made some good comments regarding that. And so I would like to see it a little bit higher. I, I was thinking I would support the 200, but I, I would, I would even, I, I think something more than the 68, though, would be preferable.
Ask for a friendly amendment?
I would ask for a friendly amendment.
I'll just, I'll just withdraw my motion. And Carl, if you want to?
Right, I'll withdraw the second then. And since you withdrew on the motion, Valerie, why don't you go ahead and make a motion?
I'll go ahead and I'll move that we approve a affordable housing fee of double the amount of the 68,000, which would be 137,000 or something like that.
Just go ahead and pick your number, 137,000 for an affordable lower income housing fee. 137,000 is the motion. I'll second that. Julie?
Um, first of all, I, I do want to say that considering the manager unit in any way an affordable unit, it's not available to the public. It's part of their doing business. It's something that already exists. I think that that's, and I, I think that we are sending the wrong message about the support for affordable housing. And when we're, we're looking at 200 or $2 million and now, you know, we weren't even able to pass a 10%, but I do appreciate Valerie, your effort to find compromise. I appreciate the trying to send the message that affordable housing is important. And most, most of all, I appreciate that this project is something now that I think that Pleasanton can be proud of and those neighbors who spoke, I think when, when it's built, you know, they may not appreciate the three stories, but I think certainly if they understood what was going, what the project was going to be built, look like. So in the spirit of all of that, I will support this motion. I, I do, I am concerned that we're sending the wrong message about our support for affordable housing, but I will support it.
Definitely on the record for that. And it is 11:50, so I want to get through the agenda, but I want everything to be discussed properly. I don't want to minimize that. But with that, we have a motion made by Councilmember Arkin and seconded by Mayor Brown. Could we take a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Councilmembers Arkin?
Yes.
Narum?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes. And for the record, it was for 137,000 into the lower income housing fund. Right. Thank you. That was a big one. Thank you very much, applicant, public storage. And with that, we can bring back our council member Balch, if he's still around for the rest of our agenda.
What's our rule after 11?
So the, after 11 o'clock, the council determines by a vote which agenda items it's going to take up with the intent on completing those items by 11:30. Then at 11:30, the council again determines by vote whether it will complete action on the current agenda items and any other ones. So it is after 11. So I would recommend that the council either vote to hear the next agenda item or postpone that.
I move to hear the next agenda item.
And anyone else would like to vote?
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right. Third, fourth, fifth. Yes. Sounds like, uh, sounds like we want to keep going. All right. So we have one item. It is agenda item 13, and it is ratifying the appointment of vice mayor and mayor. And I don't know if staff has a presentation on this. Vice mayor and committee and commission.
We don't, we don't normally present this, but I, I can surprise it just real quick. As a result of the election and the reorganization of the council, every year in December, we appoint a new vice mayor, which the mayor proposes for council ratification. And the mayor also selects committee assignments, local and regional, for presentation and ratification by the city council. So Mayor Brown has done that. And that's the item that's before you tonight.
Thank you. Quick and to the point, I get.
Is there any discussion on this item by council members?
I, I do. I cannot, I have a conflict on time with Altamont landfill open space committee. So I need to be taken off that. Even though it's the alternate.
Okay.
I can't.
All right. And did you trade with somebody already?
Uh, as it turned out, no, I did not. Because the trade would occur at the same time as another meeting. I have the energy committee.
Do we have a volunteer that could be a backup for the Altamont landfill space committee? That is, Councilmember Arkin is the member and we're looking for an alternate?
So Mayor Brown, maybe I can also mention mine and then assist there. So I wanted to just mention, I appreciate the work you did to do this. I, I don't know how this typically goes, but I will mention, I felt it was really well done in light of the conflicts of all of these meetings. And so I appreciate that energy behind the scenes. I wanted to mention, and I just noticed it while I'm sitting here during my open few hours here, that I've been suggested for the stop waste, Alameda County Waste Management, which I would prefer to be on and appreciate. However, the lavma is literally three hours later way across town. Well, one is in Oakland and one is in Pleasanton. So I think I need to possibly find a different alternate for lavma. And in the spirit of good ties, I would take Altamont to help you there. So now you're dealing with only one, but in a different spot.
Okay. And, you know, thank you for mentioning that. There, this is a complex, people don't quite see how, how long this list is. And I did try to balance it. And I also had a goal of, of each of us to be on teams together on some, and some of them have small stipends. And I tried to balance that as well. But you're right, the schedule about going here, going there, you had a request that most meetings take place during the day if possible. There was, and then some people have been on a committee and they want to stay on that committee, which I completely understand and have been. And I've been on almost all of these through my eight years. There's a few I haven't been yet, but I'm looking forward to being on some new ones. So Councilmember Balch, you're saying that you will take the alternate for Altamont landfill, but you're not able to take the alter, the alternate for the Livermore Amador Valley Waste Management Agency?
And I didn't foresee that conflict. I apologize. It's just that I realized stop waste is literally the same day in Oakland at 3:00 PM.
Yeah.
And I, I do believe that.
A test that you will not be able to get back unless it's a very unusual circumstances to, to get back for the meeting in three hours.
Well, in the Zoom world, I think I'd be okay, but I, after, I would think we'd have to evaluate it. So maybe we just nip it now. It's my suggestion.
Sounds good. We'll work that through. And then Councilmember Narum, you're saying that you are not able to attend the LA VWMA meetings?
The which one?
The lavma.
Have the Livermore Amador, right? Livermore Amador.
No, I'm not. That's at the same time as the East Bay Community Energy.
Okay, both of you have a conflict. And so the city manager feels differently. There are two members. And so if for any reason, one is not able to attend, we still have a representation on that board. City managers, that are right, just not having an alternate for the LA VWMA?
You know, I've been doing that one.
I'm at a deficit because my internet has been breaking out. So I actually, I actually didn't hear Vice Mayor Narum's conflict. So I, I'm sort of trying to play catch up here a little bit.
So I, I have a conflict with the Altamont landfill open space committee, which
I got that.
Jack said he would take. And the one that Jack can't do, which is the Livermore Amador Valley Water Management Agency meets at the same time as the East Bay Community Energy. So I can't be in place once. I have not figured that out.
I don't, but actually I've been on that board and it's not a bad board to be on. So I could almost be an alternate, but I am trying not to be on half of these boards. So I, I propose that we just leave that as an alternate space empty for now.
My only, my only comment is, it's a, it's a, it's a joint powers authority. And when there is an absence, we need somebody in attendance.
You would have two people in attendance.
But if there's an absence, each agency gets two votes on the JPA, similar to the Livermore Amador Transit, as you're familiar with. And so when one is missing, we're at a, we're at a deficit in terms of represent.
I don't, sorry, I apologize. I didn't mean to cut you off. Nelson, Mayor Brown, I don't mind trying to do it if the other one is not with you, or maybe you and I are sharing that alternate route, routing. But given the council member Arkin and council member Tessa are the primary members, it has to be the three, one of the three of us. And clearly, council member Narum is conflicted out. So I'm trying to help carry some water here.
As an alternate, I attended maybe once a year. Truly, it's very rare. So.
Well, and if stop waste is still virtual due to Zoom, I wouldn't foresee a conflict. But I want to point out that maybe in an odd situation, we do, do have, do have two, two alternates.
All right. Let's say if you can't make it and they can't make it, then let's, let's talk. Okay? Yeah. And in the meantime, you are on Zoom. So it's so efficient for out of the area meetings. So we'll leave it as Balch. And then Narum is Balch now also on Altamont landfill open space. And any others that are in conflict? Okay, wonderful. But we can always, if we have to, we can adjust if we have to. So let me know. Right. With that, I'm looking for a motion for the new recommendations and
I'll move the, the new committee assignments for 2021.
Mr. Balch, would you like to second the motion tonight?
Sure. And with thanks, because I, I do appreciate the work you did. So thank you so much. I'll second.
More work than I ever thought it was. You're right. Thank you. All right. Any discussion? And I doubt we have anybody to speak on this from the public. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That's correct. There are no speakers.
They're all in bed. Okay. All right. With that, could you please take a roll call? A roll vote?
Sure. Councilmembers Arkin?
Aye.
Balch?
Aye.
Narum?
Aye.
Testa?
Aye.
Mayor Brown?
Yes, aye.
The motion passes unanimously?
All right. So we're going to wrap up our meeting fairly quickly. Do we have any matters initiated by council?
So Councilmember Brown, or excuse me, Mayor Brown, I apologize because I, I've been reading my rules and operating procedures while I've been waiting in the ante room. I did have one thing I noticed, and maybe the city attorney can confirm. I know we've opened the rec for my prior seat on the planning commission. I appreciate that process going forward. I happened to notice, and on page 21 of the rules, that it's mentioning that, that they are 30 days out for vacancy filling. And I didn't know if we, I apologize. This is my new game, new deal. So are we, just because of the holidays, I noticed that it's closing tomorrow, but did that get subsequently amended? I guess I should ask staff.
We are, we are running a special recruitment process, off cycle recruitment process this time around for, for the obvious reasons. So by virtue of this coming to you at some point in the future for appointment, the action will not only include the appointment, but also sort of recognize the off cycle appointment that's being made in regards to the deadline for appointment. What we typically do is if we don't get, based on our social media efforts and the press that we do, et cetera, sufficient candidates, we, we, we administratively extend the deadline by a week or two. So I'm not in a position to be able to tell you right now, the number of applications we've gotten. But I can report back via email and let you know whether or not there's a recommendation to go ahead and extend that administratively.
And I, again, I apologize because I'm reading it while waiting. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, with the holidays and everything, and I know, I know it has been well publicized. So I appreciate everyone doing that. So thank you.
We've got flexibility. It's on.
Anything else under matters initiated?
Yes, I have a couple. First, I would like to ask, given the discussions we had this evening, I would like to ask for that we have a joint planning city council workshop to discuss what might have, what might be some of the, the goals and so that perhaps we can send, discuss and align better in future projects. So I'd like to make that request. What I'd also like to request is that we have a policy schedule as city council policy discussion to create policy on community benefit calculation, supporting the general plan policy 15.5 that relates to this. So I don't know if, I guess those should be separate, not together. Do we need to have a support of the council in order to Do we need to have a, um, support of the council in order to send that request to staff?
Yes, that if there's, there would, you'd need to be three council members in support for that.
Okay, so I'll ask for the first one. Um, I think that there was a suggestion, I think Kathy, you might have even said, um, that we should have some kind of a future workshop, a plan. Oh, no, maybe that was Herb that said that. With Planning Commission and City Council to discuss goals. Is there support for doing that?
Mayor, if I can ask.
Really, after today's, tonight's discussion, I thought, I'm sorry, what?
Okay, all right, go ahead. Uh, Councilmember Balt?
A point of clarification, if I may. The goals of, the council sets the, the council priorities. Uh, so in, maybe you could help me understand the goals. And, and if I may also, uh, it may be prudent to wait slightly until the planning commission is reseated, given there are three seats, uh, coming forth. So.
Right, and, um.
What are the goals?
Now, yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of a workshop, but I, I would like better definition. The goals is a bit nebulous for me. Um, I think there's some need and I, you know, it's late and I need to give a little bit of thought, but I think, you know, I think there's an agenda there as a workshop that could be put together. But, uh, I can't just support the general goals. I, I think we need to have a lot more, we need to have more specificity around it.
Right, and I'm flexible on that. Um, Jack, what would your thoughts be for that? I, I'd just like to send to, um, staff that we put something out in the future in not too distant future, but Jack, it would make sense to, when are the, your seat is vacant right now, but there are two others that are coming up. When is that in March?
April.
April.
30th.
So I would agree to set that right after those new, and, and really in a discussion of, what I, in, I had several conversations with planning commissioners about this project that we discussed tonight. And they suggested and said that they would like to, that they don't want to spend time on projects that would not be supported by the council and that they suggested that we have a discussion, so everyone's on the same page. And, um, I think staff being a part of that discussion is important because for me, a lot of it, what went wrong was, um, not the lack of, um, some of the points in the general plan that would have taken that project in a different direction right from the start. So.
Well, there are some different ways to it. If that's the goal of, of having the general plan in the staff reports, which I brought up in my comments, is having those general plan passages so that planning commissioners and quite honestly, city council members have those to cite when they're making decisions. Um, that's, that's one step, that is one option. Doing a workshop for one project that's only come forward, I struggle with a little bit. Are we overreacting because we had one project that was, that was reviewed at the council? And it was a big project and it was an important project, but this isn't something that happens every day.
I, I, I agree with you, Carla, on that, that, I mean, we don't want to have a workshop on every single project. But I think, um, I would suggest, having been a former planning commissioner, that once we get the three people seated, I, I think they need some time in the chair kind of figuring it out a little bit, um, uh, what their purview is before we have a workshop. And I, you know, I don't know exactly what that is. Is it three months into it? Just as a, uh, uh, almost like an orientation, here are our priorities. So for example, um, we have a priority that we want to develop the life science, uh, economy or businesses here. And, you know, there was some concern around the workshop that happened, um, with tennis, um, genomics. And so I think it's important to reiterate, you know, sort of what our priorities are, what our expectations are. Once, once we get those, those people seated and give them a little bit of time to get oriented.
Uh, this could be five different opinions when you say, telling the planning commissioners five different opinions. I wonder if the city manager could weigh in at this point. Uh, any suggestions? If we move it out to the summer, so people are seated as of early May and get three, four months in, um, or is this something we can do through staff? Or direction from the council to staff and staff to the planning commission?
So, uh, I heard a couple of things. One was, um, whether planning commission reports and city council reports can reflect, uh, whether, whether what's being asked, um, uh, is in general plan conformance. And, you know, I think we can do that and, uh, sort of roll into that into 2021, uh, and, and have it look a lot like what we do on the fiscal impact uh, side of staff reports where there's an accurate representation of what the costs are. And I think Ellen and her team can probably come up with something that begins to mirror that, um, for land use items. In regards to, um, orientation and workshop, um, I, I, I really, my opinion on this is I think you have to have your commissioners, uh, in place, oriented, understanding the job and their role, um, staff's role, et cetera. The more time you can give, uh, for that discussion, I, uh, it'll be more effective. And it also gives the council an opportunity, this new council an opportunity to understand, you know, what it's, what its objectives are, um, you know, as a new group. Um, because that's going to be really important, uh, when we have a workshop to, to really have this group understand, uh, what, what the mission, purpose and goals and objectives are. So midsummer, early fall would be, would be ideal.
Sound okay, Julie?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. That sounds good. And I really like what you're suggesting, Nelson, to, um, ask that our planning staff start incorporating in, the references, relevant references for, in the general plan on projects so that, um, everybody is on the same page on that. Um, okay, that sounds great. Then my other was that I really think that this discussion highlighted something that, is missing and that is a policy of a calculation of community benefit. And can we ask staff to take a look at that? Ask our planning department to put something together and that it would be a future discussion for council?
If I may mention, uh, Mayor Brown, apologize. You know, I was actually, when, when Councilmember Tessa mentioned this, I was actually wondering if this should be something as an item we think about for the priorities in March, if you wanted, so that we might have time to evaluate that. And that's maybe up to the group to decide.
Obviously.
Why? Yeah, really, on the priorities, I.
Because it's quite a bit of staff time to come up with this and you do research on other communities. Uh, and as I'm concerned, are we the only city in the Tri-Valley? Or are Dublin, Livermore, San Remo, Danville, are they also considering or implementing that? So it'll give, uh, this council a little bit of time to be seated. I don't think we have any huge projects coming up between now and, um, the mark, the February priority setting meeting, but.
And, uh, if I may, Councilmember Tessa, I, I meant it as, uh, during my orientation, uh, with Councilmember Arkin, we heard of quite a lot on staff's plate coming before, uh, the council in the next, uh, apologize staff a quarter, I would say. So all I was mentioning was, uh, it could dovetail into the priorities possibly, uh, and only my opinion, one out of five.
Any other thoughts on that?
Cause I'm. I, I tend to agree with Jack. I don't, I actually don't think it's going to be that easy unless somebody's got a template that we like and we're willing to copy. I mean, you saw it tonight with the EPS report. I mean, they didn't even have it accurate. They didn't do the math correctly. They didn't calculate the fees correctly. Uh, they didn't have the square footage correct, the basic things. And, you know, if we're not able to get that, um, I, I, I think it's, it could be a heavy lift. I also, you know, I owned a mini storage for seven years and the assumptions that they were using and some of the things are just, are not reflective of what was going on in the real world, quite frankly. And so I, I think it's a, it, it would be nice to have, uh, something that's prescribed, but I don't think it's going to be that easy to really come up with something that not only the five of us can agree on, or a majority of us can agree on, but that the business community says, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, can I ask Ellen? Um, you, you were given a very short period of time to try and put something together. Um, I'm sure that was really difficult for you where if I, you said you've worked in other communities that in fact have had community benefit prescribed programs that, um, what is your feeling about, would it make more sense for your department to have that? Would it be something that since you've worked in other communities, we know that there are programs that exist?
Um, yeah, we were definitely challenged in the time available to do the work with, uh, you know, thoroughness, um, that, that we would like to. And that I think was, uh, you saw that in, in some of the, the changing numbers. Um, I have worked in places where community benefits, um, the frameworks have been, have been part of what the city does. Um, I will say that they are challenging and they're challenging for some of the reasons that, um, Councilmember, but Narum suggested, which is that you can, for, for, as, as good as your framework is, it's only as good as the data and the assumptions that feed into it. And, um, although, you know, and I think EPS, to their credit, did a, were, were very helpful in sort of bringing in, um, more of an expert opinion that, that, than staff has to help to inform some of those things. Clearly there was a lot of room for debate and discussion on the right levels and knowing that there's a lot of sensitivity in those models to very small changes and things like a rental rate per square foot, you know, a dollar, a dollar makes a huge difference. Um, so, you know, it, I think as much as it feels, uh, like a mathematical exercise is, is, is helpful, uh, it's, it ends up being as much of an art as a science at the end of the day for that, for that reason, because there, there can be so much room for, for debate about those factors. And so, um, I'm not sure that it necessarily improves upon the method that we have already, which, which gives, A, gives the city a lot of flexibility to, to negotiate those benefits and to right-size those packages to the things that make sense for the community and for the project as well, without necessarily trying to shoehorn it into a really rigid methodology. So that's, that's my experience. I think it was born out a little bit. I was reminded a little bit of some of the pitfalls in just going through this exercise for the public storage project. But it's, it's a challenge. It's hard to do it, hard to do it and hard to get it right.
Okay, great. Um, I'm sorry, I'm just getting so late. Um, I think we have three votes for that. Uh, we can do a roll call vote if the clerk is still there. But to put it on the priorities, uh, Councilmember Tessa, and, uh, it's, and, um, discuss it, get pop, proper feedback from the business community as well as the residents. Okay, do we have three votes? Everything's good on that one? Just trying to be efficient.
Point, point of, point of clarification.
Just to clarify for staff, uh, so that I understand it, what's the three? Uh, we're just going to add it to the inventory of items that'll come forward. And then when you have your workshop, approve your work plan, you'll decide whether prioritize it in the coming year.
Exactly, exactly. So it looks like we have some support on that. I, I have one thing that I really want to. So speaking of that book that Jack was referring to, uh, the actual, sorry, the actual rules and operation procedure was written in 1995. And I went through it briefly just to say why it needs updating. I would propose it be updated. So even things like, uh, the setting the agenda, member of the public may request. If it's unclear, it needs three votes in the council, like an item is requested by a council member. So I'd like to see that modified agenda posting. Back in 1995, they didn't even post it on a website. So we need to add that. Robert's Rules of Order, we have discussed, there are some formats that are similar, but might be more conducive to what this council and how these council meetings. Um, it says a council may request an excuse or an unexcused absence from the mayor. This is something very odd we don't do. Presiding officer shall determine all points of order, plus the presiding officer states all motions submitted for a vote. So I would have to restate every motion we make. And it goes on, mileage, it says it's 28 cents a mile. The IRS gives you credit for 57 cents a mile. And, uh, lastly, the adoption of the second reading. If it's not unanimous, it has to be fully read two times according to this book. So there's some updating that this council and councils before us, uh, have done. I'd like to take, ask staff to take a look at it. It could be a priority, but I think it's, it's, um, we've got a break between now and the next meeting, which is January 19. This is a legal, probably you would go through Dan Sodergrin's group. And I'd like your support to ask Dan to work on it.
I 100% support that.
Agreed.
I do too.
1995, I know. Jack, were you in Portland then?
I, I can work with, I can work with the city manager's office because they're, they're both legal issues and policy issues and procedural issues. So work with the manager's office and we can bring something back to start a discussion, uh, on this, if, if that's all right.
Thank you. That sounds perfect.
I graduated high school that year. Thank you.
Okay. All right, and, um, just, uh, just a few moments if we could for Jack's grandmother and.
I have, I'm sorry, I have some matters initiated.
Oh, you do? I'm sorry. Valerie, you're so quiet. All right, Councilmember Arkin.
Well, I am, I am muted. That's why I'm quiet. Um, I have, um, a couple of things. Um, one is I would like support to bring the item of our mask mandate and enforcement of it. And I just want to preface that by saying that our school district is, you know, as you all, I'm sure know, going through a really rough time with reopening schools and community input with that and everybody all over the map. It would really help our school district if we help with our community and people wearing masks. So I would like to see if we have, at least have the conversation, um, on an enforcement of our mask mandate. That's one thing.
So you mean a fine system or that the officers say, hey, guy, you gotta put your mask on?
Well, that's what we can discuss. I, I, I think it's all, you know, the council, us as a council can discuss that. What does that look like? What does that entail? What type of staff time, uh, police time does that, uh, would incur, um, other options we may want to consider? I don't know. I think it just warrants a discussion. And it would help, I think it would really assist and support our school district by doing this.
Mayor Brown, uh, apologize. Quick question on this. Since I was watching a lot of council meetings, uh, before November, I'm aware of that this issue came up. But I'm also aware that, um, I think someone requested a memo be presented to council members on how that might be carried out or how, uh, it might be enforced. Uh, not being on the council at the time, I did not receive that. Is that something that was produced?
I forwarded it to you, Jack.
But just to make it as a public document, it was created by the city manager's office and distributed. So, um, obviously that means probably Valerie did not get a copy of it.
Maybe I didn't either, but.
Yeah, my, my apologies. It, it went out almost two weeks ago. Um, it, um, Valerie and Jack probably didn't get the seats. So we can, we can send that out, uh, tomorrow morning. And, and just a clarification with the, what the memo says is the, the, the question was, uh, what's the? what's the, what's the authority? What's the jurisdiction? What are the impediments here in Alameda County? And then which cities around us mostly the Tri-Valley cities, the five, have imposed a fine and, and which have not? So it's good background information to help you make a decision on this. Maybe not tonight, but maybe in the future.
Could you please distribute it to all five of us again? All right. So Valerie would like a discussion at the council level. Do we have a second or a third for that?
A second.
I would sure like to see the memo first, but I will mention that I mean, as I started this council, you know what I said about this pandemic, so I'm not going to stand here and say I'm not there. I just would like to maybe learned a bit more.
Right. So you'd like to bring that back on the 19th of January for this, for potential for matters initiated, is what you're saying? After you read the memo?
If, if I could ask for that, I would ask for that. And I only, I'm torn, and I'll just disclose that because I understand the challenges of the holiday season and the increased exposure risks we're all facing and the three-week lockdown that we're currently in. So I'm not trying to minimize that at all. I have no knowledge, and I understand that the request is simply a conversation. So I'm a little behind some of us here.
So you, you wouldn't be willing to support having it agendized for the, what is it, January 19th, our next meeting?
So I would prefer to read the memo before the January 19th meeting. I, I should say that. If at that, after catching up, and I do apologize that I, I'm behind. I wouldn't mind then having it be brought up again, and we could see about the next one after that. And I guess it would unfortunately go to early February, correct?
I will say, if I can just comment. Because there's a lot of public pressure to reopen our schools, but the COVID numbers really aren't supporting that, this is where it would really be beneficial. And we could help with our schools reopening. And it's just, it's been a bear to deal with on the school board. So that's why I, if there's anything the city can do to help the schools, to help our numbers, to help get this under control. And just as a frame of reference, cities that I've looked at that do have a mandate, an enforced mandate, their numbers are better. So I, I, I think it just, I, I don't know what the whole council would vote on anything, if we would come with, come up with a consensus, we may not. But I think it warrants a discussion. And if our next meeting isn't until, you said it's the 19, I can't remember. That's, that's another, that's more than a month away. So bringing it up after that.
I think you'll be interested in what the memo says, because some of the cities that have fines actually have much higher per capita cases than we do, even in the Tri-Valley. Livermore is one of them. And they've had a hundred dollar mask fine for a long time. So not to get too much into detail before Dan snaps at me, but.
Okay. It'll be anyhow, it's, it's a way to support the schools. If nobody wants to do that, that's fine. Okay.
And Livermore, Livermore has not issued a single fine, so you know. So that their higher numbers aren't, you know, because they're handing out citations. It's because they're not handing out citations, but, okay.
Okay, no support for that. Okay, I'm going to try again on something else. Okay, on our voluntary campaign spending limit document. I would like to bring that as an agenda item for the council.
I'll support that.
I'll second that. Okay, there we go. We got our three.
What is it? Can you, can you just expand a little bit so that we?
When we when all candidates pull papers with the city, it is a voluntary form to sign, but there is a voluntary campaign spending limit that if you sign to it, you agree to not spend more than that amount of money on your campaign. I'd like to have a discussion on that.
Okay, all right. You got that one. Anything else?
If no one else, we did not have the opportunity to congratulate you, Mayor Brown. And I, I, we didn't make comments, and I would like just very quickly to say congratulations. And I'm really very, I'm looking forward to your leadership, and I'm very pleased to, to welcome you as our mayor. So congratulations.
Mega meeting, the midnight meeting.
Excuse me, I do have a quick report.
Yeah, I was going to go to reports, yeah, after Maggie's initiated. And I, I was questioning that because I had some reports, too. Thank you, council member Tessa. Go ahead, go ahead, Kathy.
So ValleyLink, in the last couple of weeks, has achieved three very significant milestones. The first is that the environmental impact report was released, the draft environmental impact report, all 2,000 pages of it. This has been released and is out for review. The second is that the San Joaquin Rail Authority was chosen to operate the ValleyLink trains. So they're being brought in to help with the operational design. They run the ACE train system and have a super safety and operational record. And the third thing is that the ValleyLink has an option for 200 acres of land in Tracy, near the rail or the tracks. And it's, it's Tracy's contribution. And what's significant about this is that if you recall, Bart to Livermore, the maintenance yard was, you know, kind of over the hill and through the woods for the trains. And this will be right near the track route. So three things that, that are, were huge milestones at the end of the year and, and have the ValleyLink progressing forward. So still a long ways to go, but huge accomplishment for the authority.
Thank you. So this, this, if you've been to a meeting, I, I did go to Alameda County Mayor's Conference, and we had a good discussion. Actually, they're dropping the fees to be a member. We're a member as a city, because we're, we're meeting virtually, as well as the person who is the organizer, our former assistant city manager, Steve Bochin, said, I'm not taking a raise, just freeze my salary. These are tough times. Everybody's struggling. So I appreciate that he did that. And then also, I was invited, and I'm inviting all of you, if you're interested in attending a virtual tour of Livermore Labs, National Labs, it's very interesting. And once we're out of COVID, they want to give all of us, we can coordinate it together without violating any Brown Act, a tour of Lawrence Livermore Labs facility, and it is incredibly interesting. I went previously, and I would love to have you go. There are our adjacent city to the east in Livermore. Those are my reports. Anybody else have a report out? Okay. All right, with that, I am going to ask for a few moments of, of silence for Jack's grandmother, the wonderful woman that she was. And it's, it's a wonderful story. So think about our heads for a moment. Thank you. Thank you. And Kathy, would you like to do our closing statements?
Sure. The council extends a tribute to our nation's men and women serving in the military. We wish to honor the memories of those who have died in past wars in defense of our country, including those who have died in the current conflicts in F, in Iraq, Afghanistan, and Syria.
All right, with that, this meeting is finally adjourned.